Good evening, everyone. Noting the hour and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee to order. And the reason that I'm starting tonight is because of what will transpire in just a couple of moments in terms of that time of the year and the elections for our new committee officers. But before we get there, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two and just a couple of quick updates and notes. The annual Springtown elections have taken place. Congratulations to Katie Neville on her reelection. And this evening, we welcome our newest school committee member from Boxboro, Tessa McKinley. Congratulations. Bridget?
Can you hear me? Yeah. So, just very quickly, I wanted to thank Mary Brolin for her leadership this year as Chair. Mary has proved over and over again that she can run a terrific meeting and keep us all on task, and we really appreciate your leadership this year, Mary. Thank you so much. And I also wanted to thank Amy for her passion, which is so wonderful to see during the course of the year as the Acton co-chair. And it's so clear why you do this, because of your love for the kids, and that comes through. So, thank you as well, and for the great job at Acton Town Meeting. And also to Katie, who always makes us think about things that might not have occurred to us before, which is so enriching, and you're a terrific addition to the committee. So, thank you very much for serving as the Boxboro co-chair this year. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Bridget. Item Number Three, election of the Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee Officers for the 2017-18, or fiscal year 18 year as we look ahead. As we arrive to this point in the agenda, I would like to now begin the FY18, Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee election. At this time, nominations are open for the office of chairperson. Is there a second?
Yep.
Oh, sorry, before the second.
Nominate Amy Kirsten Murphy.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, at this point in time, I'd like to ask the committee for a vote. All those in favor of Amy as chairperson for FY18, please say aye.
I am.
Yes.
I need to say that I cannot support this nomination. And the reason is that I do not trust, I'm sorry, Amy, I do not trust that you will represent all of us, and not just a minority of us, or value the collaborative process. I do not trust that you will uphold the ethics policies and the democratic principles upon which our work on school committee rests. To my colleagues, you go ahead and vote the way you need to. But I cannot support this on principle. And if I don't live by my principles, if you don't live by your principles, who are you? What do you stand for? Without principles, we are all just for ourselves, and we cease to have a common purpose as a group. So, I am truly sorry, but I just can't support this.
I absolutely unequivocally support Amy for Chair. She jumped in three years ago and has been a strong advocate for the district and the students ever since, just this past year. She's served on Budget and Policy Subcommittee. She was on our Negotiation Subcommittee, and as Acton co-chair, she cultivated a relationship with ALG that I think will be crucial as we move forward in all the big projects ahead of us. So, I can't think of a better Chair for next year than Amy.
Are there any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Beth, correct me if I'm off base with this, but we will then proceed with a vote. All those in favor of Amy as Chairperson for FY18, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. With that, I will declare the vote not unanimous, but vote in favor of supporting Amy as the next Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee Chairperson for FY18. With that, the motion has passed. Beth, correct wording. Thank you. Moving on to Item 3.2, and that is the election of Vice Chairpersons. Nominations at this time are now open for the office of Vice Chairperson from Acton. Christina?
I wonder if Paul Murphy would accept my nomination for Vice Chair. I think that it's fitting, given that he's our most senior Acton committee member. He has years of experience on this committee, has formed terrific relationships with members of our two towns, as well as staff and committee members. Paul served as my Vice Chair the second year that I chaired, and he did a terrific job. And I think he would again, so I hope he'd consider taking on that role, even though I know it's a busy time.
Are there any other nominations at this time? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor of Paul as Vice Chairperson from Acton for FY18, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. I declare that that motion has passed, and that Paul will be the Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee Vice Chairperson from Acton for fiscal year 18. Still under Item 3.2, at this time, nominations are now open for the office of Vice Chairperson from Boxboro. Is there a nomination?
I nominate Bridget Bieber for Vice Chairperson from Boxboro.
Mary, did. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, at this point, I would like to ask for a vote. All those in favor of, sorry, Bridget, as Vice Chairperson from Boxboro for FY18, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. With that, I declare that the motion has passed, which is the Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee Vice Chairperson from Boxboro for fiscal year 18. One more to go. Item 3.3, Executive Secretary. Nominations are now open for the position of Executive Secretary. Is there a nomination on the floor?
I nominate Beth Peder. It's an easy one.
That is a tough one. Any other nominations? Seeing none, at this point in time, I would like to ask for a vote. All of those in favor of Beth Peder as Executive Secretary for fiscal year 18, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. With that, I declare that Beth Peder is the Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee Executive Secretary for FY18. Congratulations, everyone. All right, if we could have, at this time, Amy come forward, I can hand over the microphone. Before we move on to Item Number Four on this evening's agenda, and I'll turn it over to Amy in just a moment, I would like to take this opportunity and read a mutual statement to the community. This statement went out this morning to staff in the district. This afternoon, it went out to our parents, guardians, our families. And it's a little bit awkward, so forgive that, but I will read it exactly as it's crafted. "The Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee and Dr. Glenn Brand have met to discuss their educational and operational philosophies, and have concluded that in these important matters, their views and interests are not aligned. As a result, and after open and honest exchange of these views, the parties have concluded their interests are best served by concluding the day-to-day employment relationship as of June 30, 2017. Dr. Brand will resign as of that date, and the committee will continue to pay Dr. Brand his salary under the effective contract through June 30, 2018, less any interim earnings in the field of education. Parties appreciate the professional manner in which these discussions took place and wish each other well." Thank you. With that, at this point in time, I'd like to move on to Item Number Four, I believe it's the appropriate, Statement of Warrant and Approval of Minutes.
All right, thank you, Glenn. We have a number of warrants to sign tonight. I'll read the list for the record. Warrant 17-022 from May 4, 2017, in the amount of $654,488, excuse me, $654,488.78. Warrant 17-023 from May 11, 2017, in the amount of $400,900, I'm sorry, just need one minute, $498,603.91. Warrant number 17-023 from 5/18/17, $1,922,801.63. For a total, oh, nope, don't do that yet. Warrant number 17-022 from May 4, 2017, in the amount of $30,178.77. Warrant number 17-22JH from May 4, 2017, in the amount of $21,711.78. Warrant number 17-023SH from May 11, 2017, in the amount of $6,094.39. Warrant number 17-23BL from May 18, 2017, in the amount of $768. Warrant number 17-023HS from May 18, 2017, in the amount of $33,864.4. Warrant number P-1723 from May 11, 2017, in the amount of $2,393,104.64. For a total of $5,561,615.94. Oh, I have a couple of, all right. We also have some minutes. We have minutes from the school committee meeting on April 27, 2017, and on February the 2nd, 2017. Do we have a motion to approve? Move to approve? Are there any comments? Oh, second, thank you. Any comments? I think, Beth, you've got some. Okay, great. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Oh, okay, yep. All right, so one abstention.
Just before we get to Item Number Five, Public Participation, it's not on the agenda, but I would like to take the opportunity and invite up three of our student representatives from the high school. They are here with us this evening, and as you know, we don't have them with us every single meeting, but certainly, the opportunity when we can make it happen is a terrific thing. It's an opportunity to provide a real connection to our students, and in this particular case, of course, from the high school. And they do have some things that they would like to take the opportunity to share with the committee and the community. And so, at this point in time, I'd like to call forward Arnav Meera, I hope I said that right. Arnav is a rising junior. Ben Lynn is also a rising junior, and Lee Dong is a rising senior. So, at this point, if you could all come up to the podium.
Hello, everyone. I hope you're doing well on this extremely warm day. As members of the committee, I understand that matters relating to the students are very important to you. I'm very sure that all of you are curious about how the students are participating in part of the policymaking process at our school. So, I would just like to share my experience in the policymaking process at our school. And one issue that particularly interested me was the four-test assessment policy. And it's been bothering me for a while. It's been bothering me ever since I started in freshman year, one day when I was just looking through the handbook and I saw it. So, basically, the four-test assessment policy is if a student has four or more assessments on a given day, then they can choose to move one of those assessments to another day. And so, I would like to fix this, amend this essentially, and change this to three tests or assessments on a given day, so that a student would only have a maximum of two assessments per day. And through this, I hope to see that students will have more time to really enjoy themselves, to develop good mental health, and also be able to actually study for their tests. Because if you have less tests on a given day, then you can really concentrate on those one or two subjects instead of cramming for all of them. So, I really, for the benefit of the students, I really would like to see this policy passed. And also, another great thing that I found about this policy is, a lot of teachers at the high school, they really do want to help the students and their mental health. But the problem is, a lot of teachers, especially who teach advanced course placement courses, they have a tough time adjusting their schedule, because a lot of the copious work is required to cover the various aspects of the syllabus in preparation for the tests. However, with this policy, it's really easy, because now the students can just move their test to another day at an after-school location, so they can still take the test, and the teachers do not have to decrease the total number of tests per year. So, actually, today, in, I believe, Item Number Eight, Mr. Kavanaugh will discuss this in further detail, and so I'll leave it to him to discuss the more specific details. I thank you all for your time, and I hope you have a nice day. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lee Dong. I am a rising senior at Acton-Boxboro Regional High School. First, I just want to say like how amazed I am that I am here right now today. I remember last time at this meeting, it was absolutely pitch black when I got here at 7:00 PM, but now, the sun has barely set. So, I'm just so amazed by how far and how quickly this year has come. Now, I want to talk about my experience. I am, like Ben and like Arnav, I am a rep to the committee here, but I'm also a class leader of the class of 2018. Now, for class leaders, there are three branches of government in our school. There are class leaders, there's the student council, and like us, we are the reps to the committee. Now, the class leaders, what we do is that we raise money for our grade, for prom, for fundraisers, for everything like that. And so, as a rising senior like I am, of course, our biggest mission will be financing prom and figuring out prom. And in light of the recent events that have happened at this school, I feel like a bunch of fundraisers can raise school spirit and also gain money for our prom as well. So, we've seen such big increases in school spirit so far. I've made very many efforts to get our grade together, because it seems like at our school, since we are so academically competitive, and since we are so competitive athletically, artistically, academically, test-wise, skills-wise, everything like that, we are just so academically rigorous, so academically outstanding, that we have begun to focus a little more about our grades and about our college applications, rather than getting to know each other as a grade. I mean, we've been together for so many years now, and it just stuns me to see some of my friends not know the names of some of the people in my grade. So, that's what I've been doing to help our grade get closer together. I mean, we are a group of 500 people, and we are a huge block of students. However, I think if we all knew each other's names, if we all said hi to each other at school, it would just make a great environment for us. So, what we've been doing so far is that we've been doing really fun fundraisers, stuff like planning prom together, finding a venue, utilizing more social media, like Snapchat, Facebook, all those things that we use every single day, to help get our grade closer. So, we have a Facebook group that we use, and we use it very, almost religiously. And the grand majority of our students are actually a part of that Facebook group, and we can take those moments and those opportunities to expose certain things that we need to have exposed. For example, we have a fundraiser, actually, tonight, that I've been planning for the past couple of weeks, that is a bake sale at our senior expo night, which is basically the seniors who take a class called Senior Project. They display their projects out tonight, and then we have a bake sale to support that. So, we've gotten a lot of junior advocacy, a lot of school spirit getting involved, and I just remember getting a huge outpour of emails from all our juniors, being like, "Oh, can I help bake something? Can I help plan something? Can I help make signs?" and everything like that. And it's just been so amazing to see throughout this year. And also, outside of class leaders, I just want to say that the AB peer leaders have been more active than ever. I remember so many times I would walk into the school, and I'd be greeted with dogs, I'd be greeted with hot chocolate, with donuts in the morning, and it's just such a great way to start our day, especially because so many of us actually do skip breakfast, because it is such an early start time. So, what I want you guys to focus on, what I want you guys to focus on is just when you're making these policies, when you are doing all these things that are so great, and we are so thankful for it, just to be thinking of us students. And without further ado, I just want you guys to have fun, make all these things that make our school so great, and to continue on doing what you do. Thank you.
I'm Ben Lynn, and like Lee and Arnav, I'm also a rep to the school committee. Unfortunately, today, I actually do not have as much to say as my coupon is here, but I just would like to thank all of you here for doing all of the work that you've done throughout the years, for making our school community such a great school, and really helping the community to grow. And I think it's hard, when we're caught up in the moment and working on certain policies, it's easy to find certain places where we can do better, and it's easy to forget all of the work that we've already done. So, I just want to thank everyone here for everything we've done so far to make this community what it already is. Thank you.
That's always wonderful to see your students so articulate and excited. Okay. This is the point in our meeting when we ask for public participation for anything that is not already on our agenda. This is the time in every open meeting where any member of the public may comment on any item that is not included in the meeting agenda. It is our policy to limit comments to two minutes per person. And is there anyone here wishing to speak during the public participation time? If you'd just raise your hand to get a sense of. Okay, great. If you wouldn't mind, please come up to the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Jensen-Fellows. I'm from 44 Neshova Road in Acton. I have two children in the school system right now. One is a senior, although he is abroad on an exchange program, he is still technically a senior. And I have a fourth grader at Douglas. In reading the statement that was sent out to the community this afternoon about the change in leadership, I noted that you said that the school committee and Dr. Glenn Brand have met to discuss their educational and operational philosophies, and have mutually concluded that in these important matters, their views and interests are not aligned. I'm hoping that the school committee, if not tonight, will provide the community with a very clear idea of what their operational, educational, and operational philosophies are, with specific examples of what they're hoping to change or pursue going forward.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Brown, Summer Street. I have an AB grad, and I have a son who's going to be in the high school next year. This afternoon, I was surprised and disappointed to receive the vague and abrupt email notice announcing Dr. Brand's departure. We're all taxpayers and heavily invested in the quality of our schools, and as taxpayers and parents, we deserve to understand the issues under consideration. I have quotes, anonymous quotes, from a few parents here. I am going to miss him, meaning Dr. Brand. I thought he was wonderful. I think he was practical and thoughtful. Another parent spoke of the discussions that Dr. Brand has been having about issues such as homework policy, start times for the junior high and high school, and expanding definitions of success. I was enjoying the discussions. They felt healthy and intelligent. I also think he's a clear and eloquent speaker. I am sorry. Another, "It has been a very tough year, and the school seemed to jump in with anything I thought might even be the slightest bit helpful. And personally, I like some of the suggestions for changes." And finally, "I feel like he made some real positive changes and was on the path to more. Really disappointed." Would you please, the board, the committee, provide us, the community, some more details about this? What are the differences in educational and operational philosophies that you're having? And can you give us an example of an area in which, say, Dr. Brand wanted to take an action, and the school committee disagreed? Looking forward, I'd like to know, what are the plans for filling the position of superintendent? What kind of philosophies will you be looking for in an incoming superintendent? And how will this situation inform your search for a future superintendent? What would you, the committee, change about your hiring process from when you hired Dr. Brand? Thank you.
I did want to say that we don't typically comment on public participation, we just allow everyone to speak. But I will say that there is a meeting that has just been scheduled for Wednesday, May the 24th, this is next Wednesday, at 7:30 PM, here in the junior high library, to discuss the next steps.
Hi, my name is Camila Lam, and my son is just in junior high school. And I think I shared a same concern as other parents that did share, what's the philosophy on the school committee, and why they are, what is, what kind of different opinion? I think you're just, being a parent, being the resident in the community, we'll expect some transparency will be good. So, how we can work together, being a parent with the superintendent, with the school, and also with the committee together. So, with that kind of transparency, we can work together. And number two, so I know that you just mentioned that on the May 24, that the next step on the transition plan, one thing that's also really bothered me is the budget. Because for this, it will pay until the next year, June 28, June 2018. With that, it is, we will have the new superintendent come in, so we will double pay. So, how we can afford to pay for those budget that is unexpected? And so, I would like to hear some comment. I don't expect it will be today, but I think it would be good to feedback to the, which is for the community, that we are the taxpayer. And the last thing, which is not related to, actually related to the other topic. So, with my, with the student in the high school, I found there's some situation, I want to bring it up, is a lot of the teachers, that they are free period to provide the kind of the answer to question to the student, is during the, which is from the first period to the eighth period. So, on the other word, when the student have a question, they try to want to approach to the teacher, they're not available. So, usually, you need to let them know in advance, and they're kind of also busy with the personal stuff. And a lot of kids, if they want to get their, kind of answer the question in the homework or the study, they need to hire a tutor. So, I really want to bring it up, because this is really bother not only for a certain kid, it's quite a number of kids. We have students here, and also, I'm sure they have something want to ask. So, I just want to bring it up, how to get the teacher be more available, which is after the school, so that it can be more helpful to the student. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Meredith Woodward-King. I live on Concord Road in Acton, and I moved here two years ago from Burlington, Vermont, where I was a school board member for five years. I was involved in the letting go of a superintendent, and I know there's a lot of stress involved in that decision. I've had lots of community members yell at me, you know, over the past five years, so I know what that's all about. But I just want to say that ironically, this week, on public radio, there was a story about how hard it is to hire superintendents in Massachusetts. There is a dearth, there are very few highly qualified superintendents to There is a dearth, there are very few highly qualified superintendents to hire, and that's where we're at now. We're letting this superintendent go. Apparently, the vague statement said something about, you know, not supporting his direction. I want to tell you that I support the direction. What I saw happening is you have a high school where you've had suicides. There have been lots of programs to address that this year. I see that we have homework that is, you know, busy homework that really doesn't do anything for kids, doesn't lead to, you know, their getting into better colleges. And I also want to tell you, I am in work for a higher ed institution in marketing admissions. Okay? So I have an interesting perspective on that. I've worked in this area for a long time, and I feel like all the measures that were being taken in this district are right on. They were exactly what's coming out of institutions of higher ed right now, the best ways to train kids or help them to enter into a global society. I also want to say, if you want to talk about making America great again, the way America became great was out of creativity, it wasn't through rote learning. Okay? This, it's all about creativity, it's all about, you know, being able to answer a bunch of math questions or do a bunch of algorithms is not what really makes a difference in our culture. My husband's in I T., he's, works as an engineer. He says the best engineers are those who are creative. You can pass all the, you know, courses, you know, take, get all the training that you need, but unless you can think outside the box, it's not going to cut it. So that's what we need. We don't need good test takers, we need kids who think out the box, outside the box and are creative. And I feel like you also, the decision doesn't listen to what the kids are saying, what they need in the high school. They need to stop getting up so early, and they've dealt with a lot of issues this year. And I feel like this is, I don't know the internal politics of this town or the school board yet, but I'm very interested in finding out what led to this decision. And I'm very disappointed in it. Thank you.
Are there any more comments from the public? Okay, moving on to item number six. This is the, this is you.
It is. Thank you. The, there are two committees that by school committee policy, the superintendent has to ensure are up and operating annually. And this evening, we have the pleasure to hear from one of them, and that's the superintendent's Wellness Committee. There were, and I'll speak a little bit more about this later this evening, it will be more or less a reiteration of the highlights of the work to this point in the year with this committee. But there were two specific areas that I asked this year's Wellness Committee to focus in on. Hopefully, members of the community recall that last year, it was almost at this time in which the Wellness Committee took the year to deliver their terrific report and study on sleep and sleep deprivation, and that ultimately led to where we're now embarking upon, and that's really significantly exploring a possible change in start times in the district. This year, the specific focus was on two things, and that was a review of our current wellness policies and procedures, and as well, school climate and culture. And without further ado, I'll at this time ask Ms. Kristin Nelson and Ms. Diane Spring to come forward. They are going to be delivering the reports along with, I think, some other help as well tonight. So Diane and Kristin.
I'm hoping, you know what they say about assuming, I'm hoping I wasn't supposed to bring my laptop to upload the slides. Do we, okay, are we ready to go? Okay. You're too good, you're too good, Shazam. Okay. Hi, everyone. I'm Diane Spring, and I oversee nursing at the elementary level. And I, along with my nursing counterpart at the seventh through twelfth grade level, Diana McNicholas, who's ill and apologizes she can't be here tonight, had the pleasure of co-chairing the superintendent's Wellness Committee once again this year. As Glenn has already described, we had two subcommittees, so I'm not going to detain, I'm just going to ask our own Kristin Nelson, our food service director, and Abigail, she is our assistant principal over at the Conan School, and they are going to present to you their findings on the wellness policies and procedures.
Good evening. Whoops, did I just say that? Yeah, there we go, sorry. So our subcommittee met, and we met over the course of the year several times. We reviewed the conclusion. There was a subcommittee previously from the two thousand fourteen fifteen school year that looked at different, different surveys that they had put out. We reviewed all of that, and we really took away that they're looking for a more unified approach to the wellness policy within the schools. One administrator shared, and I'll just quote, "Please consider having a more unified and specific direction on this. There's too much fluctuation between the schools and it confuses the parents." So we looked at what the work that they had done. We also looked at adding mental health and wellness. We added the link because that's constantly changing, so we just added that into our procedures. We also consulted with the physical ed department, we talked to Deb Rimpis with curriculum, and the nursing departments to incorporate updates into the wellness procedure document. We basically felt that we didn't have to have any change to the wellness policy, but we did make some changes to the procedures. And basically, the last time the procedures were updated was in two thousand and nine, so we hadn't, you know, we've since regionalized. And so what we did is we took a look at, we had a policy for elementary, we had a policy for the junior high, and then we had a policy for the high school. So we basically merged all of that into one procedure document. I shouldn't say policy, sorry, it's procedure. So we merged all that into one document, so that it's a little bit easier to follow for everybody. And I think, second, there you go.
So we're hoping that the new document will be easier for everyone to follow as it's a little more condensed. It's aimed mainly at the different school levels with some updated language, but no large changes. Our hope next year is to have more families and more staff aware of the current school committee policy and the revised procedures. So in that, we suggest three top action steps to achieve that goal. First, we're hoping to have an email sent out to all explaining the work that has been done for the Wellness Committee. We're only one subcommittee, you'll hear from the other subcommittee shortly. We would also like to make sure that all staff are aware of what the procedures are. In our work, we've heard that many feel that a reminder might be really helpful. And building principals are going to be asked to share this information in the fall with all of their families, however they choose fit, whether that's in their back-to-school packet, whether that's through an email, whether that's a backpacked letter or a letter home, whatever they feel comfortable with, we want to make sure all families have equal information about our procedures as a district for wellness. We are also hoping that all staff will have a chance to hear about it, not only this spring, but also next fall when we start again, so that it's new and fresh for everyone, and we have more continuity with all following the school committee procedures. This was our subcommittee. And you're going to hear from the next subcommittee about culture and climate.
Hi again, folks. So those of us on the Subcommittee on School Climate and Culture, we learned quite a good deal. None of us were authorities on the topic when we began. A couple of our members who were staff members did have a little bit more awareness than the rest of us. However, it's kind of an amorphous topic, and we're not assuming that everyone, possibly even some among you, have a clear idea what is school culture and climate. And you wouldn't be alone. Allow me to lighten the mood just a little bit by telling you a quite cute story that I had shared with the senior leadership team involving a couple of our students. And it kind of speaks to the situation that if we indeed decide to go forward with this initiative on school climate and culture, we need to educate. So when I'm not involved with administrative duties for nursing, I do direct care in one of the health offices. So last week, I had a little bit of time between the students, and I had this PowerPoint up trying to familiarize myself. Went in, walked, two of my favorite sixth grade students, they had just finished taking MCAS. They were rather stressed, and I think they just needed some downtime. So one of them said, "Hey, Mrs. Spring, what are you doing?" They point to my, my computer, and I had the slide up. Said, "Oh, I'm just working on this project for the, the school district." And so I tried to distract them a bit, and I said, "Maybe you can help me." I said, nothing right or wrong, I didn't want to further add to their stress, no right or wrong answers, but I said, "Have you ever heard of school climate, school culture, school climate?" They looked at one another, and one shrugged, and he said, "Well, climate like the weather?" And then the other one says, "Yeah, yeah, like global warming," he said to me. So it was very endearing, and, but again, it does speak to the fact that we need to do some education if we're going to move forward with, with this. So let's learn a little bit more about school climate and culture. When Superintendent Brand gave us this assignment, he had already done some research himself, and he was pretty convinced of the importance of this. Am I carrying well enough back there? Okay. But he wanted us to find out for ourselves if indeed we were convinced that the research supported us taking on yet another thing. So that was one of the things that we did look into. He wanted us to figure out what we were going to measure, there are many dimensions, what did we think was important, and what are the tools that exist to measure such things? He even gave us the option of looking at a homegrown tool, which we pretty quickly discounted because of the weight of this data. We were worried about validity and what that could possibly mean. So yeah, we wanted to stick to a proprietary tool. And then once we narrowed down, we were to choose a tool and to pilot it, and I believe Chris Whitbeck at Douglas had offered to do that. We never got to that step. Okay. All right. What is the ultimate definition of school climate and culture? Well, there isn't one, really. So we read a lot about them, but interestingly, as you read about them, they called things different, under different titles, different items, but there were threads, and everything really fell under these four main domain areas that you see here. So in an attempt to try to paint the picture more in your mind, one facet, a physical environment, right, that is welcoming and conducive to learning, a social environment that promotes communication and interaction, an affective environment, right, a little more subjective that promotes a sense of belonging and well-being, and what we're most known to do, an academic environment that promotes learning and self-fulfillment. Looking at school climate and culture is not an entirely new thing in our district. And you've heard of challenge success, I'm sure. And our colleagues at the senior high have looked and worked on a tool called Making Caring Common. So this begs the question, why are we taking one more thing on? Why are we looking at other surveys? Again, through process, what we found is that not all elements are covered in the tools we're currently using. At least two of the tools that we're recommending to you are much more broadly sweeping and cover many more of the domains. Secondly, also, most of the work that's been done thus far has been at the elementary, I mean, at the upper levels, and we're looking at a broader sweep from elementary all the way up. So that's kind of how it differs. And no really large surprise, the research has found that positive school culture is correlated with some pretty significant items. Reduced bullying, increased attendance, right, improved student engagement, and healthy social and emotional development. Now, we have a feel of what is going on in our district. We work with the students every day. However, having hard data is especially helpful, right? How do we know that what we're implementing is really working? And by having this data, we would have a much better idea. And even after we initially gather this data, we need to keep doing it, because how do we assess if things are still effective, or possibly are we throwing resources, time, manpower, over at items that are really not affecting change? And these are the three tools that we narrowed down to. We looked at quite a number of tools, not exhaustive, given the time and other duties that we all had, but we looked at a significant amount. So I would like to invite our next presenters. Rangini Reddy is a parent at Conan, and she's also, oh, but she snuck up on me. She, a research consultant with a background in psychology. We're so fortunate to have such wise parents that work with us. And our own community education director, Erin Batez, and they will present you some details on the tools.
Hello, thank you, Diane. Can you all hear me? This is okay? All right. So I'm going to reiterate what Diane just mentioned about school climate and culture. Decades of research has shown the importance of looking at student perceptions and how that correlates with, they found a strong correlation of student perceptions to learning and psychosocial outcomes. So this is a critical area that you need to give attention to. So having said that, I'm going to be presenting the first two tools that we are recommending. So the first one is the Panorama Student Survey. This survey is a collaboration between the Harvard Graduate School of Education and Panorama. Harvard Graduate, Harvard Graduate School of Education provides the academic and research expertise for the project, and Panorama, the company, provides the technical expertise where they actually host the survey and provide technical support on their cloud-based platform. The scale has been widely used in the U.S. and in nearly forty school districts in Massachusetts, including the ones that you see there, Ashland, Natick, Brookline, Milbury, Auburn, and the Watchasit Regional Schools. So in total, the survey has been given to about three million students to date. Before I move on, I should stress that this, given that it is a Harvard Graduate School of Education project, it is a reliable and valid tool. Two components you need to keep in mind when we're looking for tools in this area. So what does the Panorama survey? They have a wide range of areas that you can look at using their scales, and they designed it purposely that way because they want to give the educators an opportunity to pick and choose the items that they would like on separate surveys. And so it's over nineteen key areas, but you can see them sort of falling under these broad strokes. We have the social-emotional learning, and what the survey scales here look at is the social-emotional and motivational skills that help students succeed at school. These are areas such as growth mindset, grit, social perspective-taking, and self-efficacy. We, they also look at student support and environment, and this is the extent to which the environment the students are learning influence their academic success, their social-emotional development. And here you have scales that look at teacher-student relationships, a sense of belonging, and items similar like that. The second area is student feedback and student climate. And here, the scales look at perceptions about classroom and teaching, as well as the student environment, the school environment in general. So they cover things like classroom climate, engagement, as well as school climate, school belonging, valuing of school, as well as school safety. belonging, valuing of school, as well as school safety. Panorama also offers a family and community engagement scale, as you see there. So how do we implement these scales? So Panorama offers surveys for staff, students, and families. The student survey is for grade three onwards. The staff and family surveys may be used for all families and staff in the district. So as I mentioned, the design of the survey, having these series of scales, was done on purpose so that educators can pick and choose the items or the areas that they would like to focus in, in their district. But having said that, you can also customize the scales a little bit. You can add open-ended questions at the bottom of the survey for any areas you feel the survey doesn't tap and that you would like to know more about. The huge advantage of this scale is that it comes in over 12 different languages that can be administered. And finally, you can see that it is offered either as an online test or you can take it as a paper-based and they have comprehensive reporting as well. Okay, now the fun stuff, the cost. So Panorama has two options for cost. The first is a free open source version and the second is a paid version. For the free open source version, we can access all the items that we're interested in online, but we at the school district need to plug these items into a survey tool like SurveyMonkey. So that's, the onus is on us. There is a paid option, which costs $12,500 for 5,000 students. And what the benefits that brings is that the surveys are already online, there's more sophisticated reporting. You can also get national benchmarks if you would like and they also give strategies for improvement. So after you've collected the data or looked at the data, they can tell you, you know, these are the areas which we feel that the district can improve on and they'll give you strategies on how to do that. And then for an additional $2,000, they give you an unlimited project management support. The next tool that I'm going to be talking about is the Comprehensive School Climate Inventory. Now, this inventory was developed by the National School Climate Center, which was founded in 1996 at Teachers College, Columbia University. But since then, in 1999, the NSCC sort of split off and it's now a not-for-profit organization based in New York City. The CSCI is a very comprehensive scale and it's been used since 2002. And in 2006, it went through extensive statistical validation processes. And just like Panorama, it's also a reliable and valid tool. In fact, if you do a literature search and you're looking at your school climate measures out there, the thing that consistently comes up is the CSCI and how they recommend that. It's one of the few recommended tools to measure school climate that's currently available. It has been administered widely across the U.S. and in about 40 school districts in Massachusetts. So what does the CSCI measure? So they're very, as I said, they're very comprehensive. It's a comprehensive inventory and they scan 13 dimensions of school climate under these broad areas. So the first one is safety. And so the items here look at not only the clear communication of safety rules and norms of the school, but also the students' perceptions of physical and social-emotional safety. They have scales that fall under the interpersonal relationships realm and here the items look at perceptions of respect for diversity and social support from adults in the school as well as support from other students in the school. The third broad area is teaching and learning. And in that, it includes supportive teaching practices. What are the perceptions of supportive teaching practices in the schools such as encouragement and constructive feedback as well as support for the development of social and civic knowledge skills? And these would be things like effective listening, self-reflection, emotional regulation and such. Institutional environment, that basically looks, the items there look at physical surroundings of the school. So you know, how clean it is, how well-equipped they are, what kind of resources the school has, as well as school connectedness and engagement. They do have an area that taps into social media and they also have staff-only dimensions. So these are scales that are given only to the staff of the district, of the school district and they, the items tap leadership and professional relationships. So how do we implement? What are the implementations? So for CSCI, they have separate surveys. So they have a survey for students in grades three to five and then they have a survey for the middle and high school students. They have paper as well as online versions and currently they only have two languages, English and Spanish, available. Administration time is typically 20 minutes for the students and 15 to 20 minutes for the adults. Here, there is no flex room, so to speak, because the tool is reliable and valid. They expect you to administer it in the way that it has been created, to maintain that validity and reliability. However, you can tack on open response items at the end of the survey and this would be done after discussion with the organization. All right. So how much does this cost? The base package for CSCI is $10,350 and this is based on estimate of number of students and staff that I gave the person I was in touch with. And I got it off the DOE website and that was 5,491. That's a combination of students and staff. And what is this buys? So what it buys us is online survey links. If you want to have a paper version, it's going to be a dollar 75 more expensive per survey. They give you access to their online portal, which gives us guidelines for administering the surveys, link support, and real-time response rate. And at the end of the data analysis phase, they also give you action planning sheets just like Panorama did. I should also mention that Panorama does give you a comprehensive report package, but I think that's part of the paid, it comes under the paid option. So the CSCI also provide a report within two weeks of the survey administration and this gives you a narrative, it's a narrative and numerical summary. And at the end of all of this, they offer a webinar call or a phone call to talk to you about what you discovered in the analysis and what are the areas that they find that might benefit from improvement. And then they give you a strategy or strategy action plans to how to implement to affect those particular areas. For an additional cost of 750, they will also provide district-wide reports of common trends and patterns across schools. So I'm going to hand it over to Erin for the last.
So you'll notice that the option I'm presenting is a bird of a very different feather than the two you've seen thus far. And I chuckle that I got this duty side. And that, of course, is working with a sole practitioner. We happened upon Stan because in addition to vetting probably about a dozen different tools that we found, we reached out to other colleagues at other school districts to find out if any of them were working on the issue of school climate and what they were using and if they liked it or not. And Heather Stauk, the McCarthy Town psychologist, knew of some folks in Sudbury who were doing this and had been doing so for many years and had very positive experience. So they were the ones who introduced us to Stan Davis. He's someone who has dedicated his whole life to issues of youth and education and empowerment and building community and building relationships and has worked with Sudbury Schools, I think, for about eight years doing this kind of work. He's been a social worker, a school psychologist, a child therapist. In his early days, he worked in the civil rights movement. He's just a really committed gentleman who has been involved in these kind of issues for many, many years. His focus is a little more, it's less expansive than some of the other tools you've seen with a real emphasis on bullying prevention because he sees that as the most important factor in creating a positive school climate, that if you can create that sense of belonging and community and relationships, that that goes a long way towards promoting everything else that works well in schools. And so his dimensions, which is the terminology in school climate, are really more focused on those relationship-oriented things. He's written several books on very interesting topics as well, so we just wanted to give Stan's book a shout out there. Stan does surveys for grades three to 12. He works with essentially his own SurveyMonkey account. They are not paper versions, so that's different from some of the other tools you've heard. He'll do, he'll compile all the statistics and prepare a report. Though his questions may be a little more in the social side of things, he will work with communities to add some additional questions that might pick off some of the additional dimensions that we'd like to understand about our school district. So it is customizable, though his emphasis in a particular area. One thing that's a disappointment, you know, in our research is that it's currently only available in English. So if we decided to go this route, we'd really have to explore what it would mean to translate it into other languages and the impact of doing so, both on the process and on the costs. So the thing that Stan stands out in maybe comparison to some of the options is it's a more modest cost for us. $500 per school and you get an initial consultation to talk about what's important to your community and to modify his survey to best, you know, reach the questions that we're looking for. He would then administer the survey to students and staff at each school, prepare a written report, and then also have a consultation, most likely via webinar or on video, to discuss the results of the survey and then also recommendations for our district going forward. So it's a, it's a different kind of alternative, but something that's worked really successfully for our neighbors just a little away. So we wanted to present, you know, a kind of a different alternative as you consider where we're going to go with this.
So where do we go from here? That is the question. So review the tools with your senior leadership team. I did that a bit last week with them. They're your key people who are going to be rolling this out if you decide to move ahead with it. It is important that they have buy-in and that they be the primary people who decide which one we want to use. Not that everything comes down to money, but I think probably the folks in this room know more than others that it does often boil down to money. You have to figure out where this money's going to come from. I would ask you not to be too frightened right off the bat. We did put out some feelers to some community stakeholders and they were interested. And also, right before we were getting ready to present and we weren't ready to implement it, but Facebook is putting out a grant, had put out a grant specifically to support school districts with dealing with school climate and culture. I would guess with social media being what it is, that that will not be the last that we see of that offer. So I'd say, you know, stay tuned. I think that may work for us. And consider the hidden costs, you know, of using lower-priced tools carefully, the time and the expertise to set it up, administer, tabulate, extrapolate out, and what would be the potential effect on validity? We're not, we're not sure. My mother, God bless her soul, used to say, "Penny wise, pound foolish." So I mean, really, really think about that. And also Glenn had told us that through his, and correct me Glenn if I've misparaphrased you, that in your school committee, not your school committee, but your school superintendent circles, there's talk at the Massachusetts level of possibly making this a mandate for school districts to embark upon this. So when you're looking at validity, right, we want to make sure we have the right tool and we have our ducks lined up in a row. And then we need to determine which chosen tool we'll use and how will it be piloted? Initially, we were talking about doing it at Douglas, but will that be the way? Should we do it one at the elementary, one at the junior, one at the high school? That will be a decision to be made. Here we are, back to education again, right? In order to get buy-in, you have to make sure that people understand. People are so busy, just another survey. There will need to be a campaign to really educate folks and help them to understand why this is so important. And again, address concerns. People get worried about data. What's going to happen with this data? Who's going to see it? Is it going to be disseminated? Is it only for internal use? Not to be frightened of it, but to be very clear about it, right? And obviously, our subcommittee strongly suggests that the results be gathered for the purpose of understanding where we're at and where we want to go and hopefully to better support the needs of our students and our staff. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. I mean, it's very thorough and thank you so much for all of your work all year long. Really appreciate it. Are there any comments or questions from the committee?
Amy, what is, what is our role? I mean, are we supposed to choose one or are you going to choose one with, in consultation with the stakeholders that you're working with?
So again, I'm not privy to the, the structure of how school committee interfaces with senior leadership or who makes the final decision. Our recommendation would be just go for it, really, that the senior leadership team, meaning your principals, your, you know, assistant superintendents would form probably similarly to what you did with school, right, with the school sleep times and all that, a little subcommittee to go further with it. Now, we wouldn't just drop it and leave it with you. A couple of the consultants that we dealt with, they're ready to come in and talk to the senior leadership team, right? You have to get ready for the sales pitch, but, but you'll be able to sort through that and you can make a decision. And of course, you know, those of us who have done the work on it would come back and support you if you wanted to move forward with that. So as far as the school committee per se, I don't know if you have to give the okay, so I'll leave that to your internal structures.
So I'll just add and thank you for that. So the, the interest here is to try and provide the insight for what the wellness committee studied, as has been recommended that this then would move forward with these three possible tools to the administrative team to further explore. And collectively, the team will need to consider other survey data that is out there and being collected. In my goals report that's in the school committee packet, and I'm looking specifically at the, my last recommendation, and that is urging the school committee to maintain the dialogue with the administration around pursuing the adoption of one of these tools as we move forward. I think that, and I appreciate all of the insight and the work that was commented on. I had the chance to meet with the committee on a number of occasions. You know, there's a lot of really rich information that I think can be gained and is in complete alignment with where we want our schools to go as it relates to being inclusive, safe, and welcoming. And I think we could probably find the right tool that touches upon that and allows us as a school community to, with pride, have data that speaks to where it is that we can grow and similarly where it is that we're doing, doing good work. So that's really at the core of this work. It would be the intention to have the administrative team look further at these and then come back to share, to share these possible tools with the committee in advance of anything going out to the community.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Go ahead. Oh. Ten?
One question for all three. Would we own our own raw data? I know we get reports back, but I get a little nervous particularly with the consultant, like if he retires, moves or something, you know, do we have the raw data to then continue our own trend analysis?
Again, I, yes, 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 I think, yeah, we do. And then we would definitely make sure of that before we were to decide on one, too, but well, well thought out for sure.
So thank you for this. I appreciate kind of getting a little bit of feel for each of the different options. What I, what I heard though was, and I think it was Mr. Davis, only works in English. And, and I don't know, and I've heard talk about hidden costs. I don't know what it takes to translate because his cost seems so much lower than others.
Right.
But if, you know, if we factor in the cost of translation, you know, does that bridge that gap? Or I, I just don't know the cost of translation. So my, you know, maybe as we ruminate on these options, we can, we can kind of get our arms around that.
That's a good point. I know that a couple of members of our senior leadership team had focused right on that. Would Stan Davis? would Stan Davis be amenable to us translating, number one, and then obviously the added costs, how would it? And also, again, it does not have quite the broad spectrum of domain areas, so then you would have to decide how much do you value, or is it kind of inherently kind of wrapped up in his work anyways, kind of indirectly? But good questions, Diane? Oh, go ahead.
Just keep in mind when you talk about Stan Davis. Oh.
Come on over.
Oh, because we're being filmed for the... No, no, it's fine. So just to keep in mind that when you look at these tools, it's really important that you have statistical validity and reliability, because at the end of the process, you want to make sure that the data that you're getting is reflecting what you want it to measure and not something else. So I think with the English version, that's, you know, with Stan Davis, that's, that's not an issue. But once you go into the translation territory, it gets a little dicey, because in psychology, when you're doing these kinds of scale translations, you actually have to do a double translation. So you have to translate from English to Spanish, whatever language, translate it back to English to make sure the essence of the first translation held in the translator. So just keep that process in mind as well.
Yeah. Thank you for that presentation. I mean, that, I know how much work it is to be on those subcommittees, and I know Erin's on a few subcommittees, so thank you for all the work. I, I remember when we were presented with this, Dr. Bren, when you put this, we were all a bit confused initially, right, when this was presented as a, as a goal to evaluate school climate. But it, this, this presentation was just a great presentation, and, and I think in the long run, when, when we look at things we want to implement, like challenge success or, or other initiatives, having some basis of why we're buying this tool or buying that tool to help within the district, I think, is immeasurable. The other thing I'd, I'd want to make sure we look at is, you had mentioned that we would also need, like, follow-up, right? I mean, we're going to do it one year, so we should probably put that in the cost of what do we think, you know, how many, are we going to, do we think we need to do it every two or three years, and then, and figure that out ongoing, so that, that's included in our budget as well going forward? But thank you very much.
Diane, I just have one thing. So I know the CSCI, they give you a 5% discount at the, for every additional administration of the survey. But you're right, you can't just do ones and then forget about it, because you need to do it once, figure out where you need action plans, and once you do the action plans, you have to see whether they worked. So it's good to have that follow-up, and, you know, it depends on how long you would like to pace that out. I think for Panorama also, the free version, obviously, is free, so you can use it. I'm not sure about the cost. I wasn't the person who reached out to Panorama, so I'm not sure what the cost would reflect for additional administration.
No, and that, so when we, when we look, we go forward with this, which seems like a great idea, and it sounds like everyone feels the same way, we should probably have some grid made, you know, the three alternatives, whatever, but, but just make sure that we don't think of it as a one, one raw deal, that we look and evaluate them based on replication going forward, you know, multiple years.
Diane, you mentioned that grid comparing them. So sorry, we didn't move along. The asking, yes, seek and you shall find, but obviously probably not the level of detail that probably the presenters would give us, but there is, that is that also. And so, Paul?
So you've spent some time this year kind of doing the groundwork to, to generate options. You know, the, the budget cycle has passed for the next year, but, you know, so the next step, I guess, would be to hand this up to the, to us and the administration to sort through which, which option we prefer. So it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't actually get into the next budget cycle until the year after next, I guess. So unless there's something we can do in the middle of the year, which might be tough.
How would community partners, let's say that, you know, certain community partners decided to fund the first year till you got it into your grant cycle, would that be permissible? You know, I mean, just an idea. Yeah, yeah. So I think that could be. Diane?
I had one other question. I saw some of your questions that you had. Were those questions only to the principals? I mean, what was the, the survey group? It was the food survey. What group was that to?
Oh, that was, okay, that was preliminary work, I think, for the 1415 Committee for Wellness Policy and Procedures that didn't have to do with the school climate and culture. Kristin, Abigail, do you know in the packet what she's speaking of? I think the survey tool, yep, 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 yep.
What, what was the survey? I didn't read all.
Yep. Okay. So the question was, Diane was asking, in your packet this evening, there was reference to historical survey that was conducted when, I think in 1415, the same wellness committee had looked into what's going on with wellness policy and procedures, and a survey, I wasn't on that particular subcommittee, but I believe a survey went out to administrators and asked them, you know, we were looking, what, what's happening, you know, in your schools around various wellness policies and procedures? So I think that's what it is, Diane. And Kristin is nodding, and yeah, and Abigail's nodding at me, so that's usually a good sign. So, okay. All right. Any other questions? No? Well, thank you for your time, folks.
I just would like to, again, thank Kristin, Abigail, Diane, Erin, and Regina for, for presenting tonight, and there, as you can see, many, many more people who spend hours and hours as part of this committee. I think that this wellness committee, this past year as well as last year, truly exemplifies the opportunity for multiple stakeholders to come in and really produce some great work. And so I thank, I thank all the members of the committee this year for their considerable time and attention to this, and thank you for the presentation tonight.
Okay. So moving on, Dawn Bentley, our Director of Student Services is going to introduce our next...
Yes, so we have, we have Dr. George Batch with us here tonight from the University of Southern Florida. We've had the pleasure of working with him throughout the school year, as we have embarked upon one of our long-range strategic plan goals around multi-tiered systems of support. Dr. Batch is the, is a professor and co-director of the Institute for School Reform at the University of Southern Florida. He's also the co-director of the Florida Statewide Problem Solving and Response to Intervention Project, as well as a number of other large projects for the Florida Department of Education. And the majority of his work over time has focused on systems of implementing academic and behavioral interventions for students who are at risk. He's also the co-author of a number of books around implementing response to intervention. So without further ado, I want to turn it over to him as he shares some of the information from the self-assessment that we conducted over a few days with a variety of stakeholders in December. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dawn, and thank you, Chair of the Committee and Dr. Bren, for asking me here tonight. As Dawn indicated, I'm at the University of South Florida in Tampa. I never thought coming to Massachusetts, that when I went home tomorrow night, I was going to look forward to cooling off. Eighty-five degrees here seems hotter than in Florida for some reason. I just wanted to, I know that it's late, you have a long agenda, and I, I didn't realize that the agenda was kind of integrated with mental health, psychological services, student supports. So this will fit in well to the, to the previous items that were talked about. And I, I apologize for my, my voice, as Dawn and Deb know, I, I'm here, we're working with a couple of school districts in Massachusetts on the Cape. So I finished up with the superintendent there at around 4:30 and jumped in the car and drove here and did conference calls along the way. So if you need me to speak louder, please let me know. And I won't keep you here tonight, because I'm going to jump back in the car and go back to the Cape after I'm done. So in the context of your strategic plan, goal two was our students will have equitable opportunities and tools to learn, and part of that is implementing MTSS. And the, the term equitable is, is an awesome term to have in a strategic, strategic plan, because it basically says you want to ensure that all kids have access to what they need in order to be successful. And that is one of the goals of multi-tiered system of supports. Before we go into this very briefly, and I give some of the information, I wanted to talk with you a little bit about the method that we used. We were asked to come in and given your strategic plan and what's going on in the district to talk about what it would look like moving forward to implement this. So I had the opportunity over a couple of days to meet with just a ton of people, teachers, special ed, general ed counselors, administrators, school principals, some school committee members, to, to get a sense of priorities, get a sense of the culture of the district, what your goals were, how you thought you were doing now. I came back maybe a month or so ago to meet with the building principals, to talk with them about if you implemented this, what would it exactly look like? What would be, what would have to be done in order to do this? And what might be some timelines? I'll talk about that a little bit, but the major point here is that everything we're talking about tonight is a go slow to go fast. MTSS is not another program. It is a way of integrating everything that you do, and you've certainly talked tonight between the wellness committee, the school climate, school culture committee, that you have a lot of things that you have on your drawing board. And one of the important things, and in my past job, is I was also a building principal for a number of years and a district administrator, and I know well that education can become a fad issue. It's one more thing. And the real focus of MTSS is that it's the thing. It's what integrates, increases effectiveness, and increases efficiency. So I'll give you some ideas about that. First thing we wanted to know is, what are your changing demographics in this district? I work with a lot of districts. Our center, one of our goals of our center is not only research and tools and what have you, but it's also supporting schools in doing this. You have a significantly changing demographic in this district, and you probably already know that. You have a steady decline in the percent of white students that make up your population, and you have a significant increase in Asian students, and you have a significant increase in black, African-American students and Hispanic students. Your rate of growth actually for black, African-American, and Hispanic is pretty dramatic, even though it hasn't hit a critical mass yet. For example, your increase in Hispanic students in the past year has been 20%. And that's important to know. And the reason, and I put these things up here that's in the report that I believe the board has, but it basically summarizes what I just said. When we look at the performance of students, first of all, it has been a pleasure to come here. You folks have an amazing school district. The creativity in this school district, the flexibility to, to do things in a variety of ways is, is a breath of fresh air. In, in a system of education, that seems to become increasingly rigid and formulaic and what have you. So in my visits to your buildings and with your building principals and your staff in those buildings, it, it is, it is clear that you have a good history of outstanding performance, which probably draws people to this district, right? But there are differences in performance across groups. Clearly, white students, Asian students are outperforming everyone else. When we break it down by race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, and students with disability, the graph looks like this, but basically here are the data. About one-third of the students who are black, African-American, or Hispanic are not attaining state standards in the district, while 85 to 95% of other students are. In addition, approximately 50% of the students with disabilities in the district are not attaining standards. So that begs the question, how do we take the resources you have and ensure that your high-performing students not only maintain that, but continue to grow? That is very important. Multi-tiered system of supports, if you have high-performing students that you think should be performing higher, well, that's an opportunity to get additional resources in order to do that. This is not just targeted at students who are performing below your benchmarks. But it is a significant disparity across groups. Your race, ethnicity, and if you have disabilities, is a strong predictor of what your overall outcome will be. The demographic groups that are increasing in population, most, increasing the most in the proportion of the district population, is also the groups whose performance is the lowest. And as this continues to grow, the need to ensure that the mission of this district, targeting all students, is important, because it will become increasingly difficult to rely totally on those high-performing students, because there are going to be fewer of them. And therefore, the overall reputation of the district, what your standards are, will become more difficult to meet unless you begin planning for this process now. The shifts in the demographics, I think we all are well aware of that. So how will this help AB school district in successfully addressing the needs of all students? So Massachusetts, like a number of states, partially driven by what the federal government has put out through the U.S. Department of Education, and I know all of you are familiar with the Every Student Succeeds Act, it's the latest iteration of, of, of our education act, has adopted multi-tiered system of supports. It's embedded throughout because of its efficiency and effectiveness around integrating what you want to do. This is not a system that tells you what to do. It's a way of integrating what you want to do. It doesn't dictate pedagogy or, or anything like that in order to meet your goals. So your state already has a model. The model is, is very busy, I'll put it that way. And you are fortunate that your state begins with an M, because therefore you only have to say Massachusetts tiered system of supports instead of something multi-tiered system of supports. So basically, what this says is this, is that it focuses on system structures and supports across the district, school, and classroom to meet the academic and non-academic needs of all students. And I'm going to make a comment about that in a moment and tie it into some of the information that was presented around the, of the culture and climate and wellness. It was developed to help guide the establishment of a system that provides, provides high-quality core for everyone, as opposed to core meeting the needs of some kids and then moving kids to someplace else to get them help after they have fallen behind. And I want to give you a statistic, and this is from my, from my days as a building principal primarily. What we do know is if students are more than two years behind, or more than two years where you expect them to be, there's only about a 10% chance they will ever catch up. And let's just take the students who are below standards for right now, or imagine a, a track race at your high school. You know that anyone who is behind, in order to catch up, must run faster than everyone in front of them. For academics, that means that students who are struggling for some reason, their academic growth rate must be greater, the slope or the angle of that line must be steeper than everyone in front of them. They must grow more every year than all of the other students that are their classmates. It's a formidable task. So the goal is, don't let students get behind. That's the goal, and if you'll just keep that in your head for a moment. It also focuses on academic and behavioral issues, and it also includes a huge school compliance, climate component. So some of the summary issues are high-quality core, research-based academic interventions, and behavioral, social, emotional interventions, screening for the purpose of identifying kids before they get behind, and collaboration and communication between educators and parents. If there's something that seems to be more urgent right now, is that none of us can do this education thing alone. Not parents, not general education, classroom teachers. It's got to be a collaboration, and it has to be a team, and, and those are areas that we all have to put more emphasis in. This is right off of your Massachusetts website, developing a system... Developing a system of academic and non-academic support may represent a significant change for school districts and schools, one that affects the entire school system and may require a long-term change process, three to five years. And you build it in as you move. Adhering to a blueprint is instrumental to the success of a tiered system of support. So you have already identified this as a priority. And so your next step moving forward would be what does your blueprint look like? And what are all the puzzle pieces on your table for the services you offer? How do they get put together in a way to create the picture that you want of the A B school district? I'm going to spend just a couple of minutes, given the late hour. I chose to use slides that I used with the building principals and others earlier, just so you could see the same stuff. I know it looks a little complicated, but I'll try to make it simple. There are basically six areas that comprise a multi-tiered system of supports. And by the way, this is my 42nd or 43rd year in education. We've always done a multi-tiered system of supports. We've always had general ed. We've always had remedial something or other, whether it's title or what have you. We've always had other kids that need additional services. But they're just kind of standing out there. This is a system of doing that. Doesn't represent a philosophical change per se. So things like leadership, building the capacity of the district to do it, and communication and collaboration, that's true with everything you do, right? That's not unique to this. What is unique to this is how do we deliver services, all the services you have, in this multi-tiered way? And I'll mention that in a moment. And when we are not happy with how a group of students are doing, individual student, what is our way as a school district of problem-solving that? How do we go about that in an effective and efficient manner? And how do we use data? The person, I'm sorry, don't name, no names, but the person that stood up here before said, "It's important to know if this is working," right? And that's the truth here as well. And by the way, I really commend you on your social-emotional, school-climate stuff. A piece of research came across my desk about a week ago, demonstrating the impact of well-delivered social-emotional factors in a climate, contributing as much to the academic achievement, for this statistician here contributing to the variance for academic achievement, as much as the instructional component. And so that you're quite leading edge here with that stuff. So I'm going to show you a couple of things. The bottom line is this, we have to find kids early. We can't let them get behind. So how do we do that? We can predict with about 80% accuracy in kindergarten which kids are going to be struggling in reading and literacy and math in third grade before they fall too far behind, before that heavy lift. The allocation of resource for kids who are two years behind, the amount of resources this school district has to allocate to catch them up is tremendous. It is huge. You identify them in kindergarten, you're paying pennies on the dollar. And don't mess around. Act quickly. Don't sit around. You find kids who are struggling, it's better to go ahead and do something about it than to sit and wait. Monitor their progress on whatever it is that you're targeting. And if you don't like it, then modify it again, and don't wait, act. And honesty and transparency is important. I have something that I'm going to be doing next week for a school district not far away. And I'm going to ask them to give their definition of the difference between effective instruction and an effective teacher. Whenever instruction tends to go down, we tend to look at teachers and try to throw them under the bus. We can have highly, highly effective teachers that because of the changes in a school district are delivering the instruction that they know extremely well, but that instruction is not designed to meet the needs of changing groups of students. So we can have highly effective teachers, highly effective instruction at one level, and still have students struggling. So this isn't about effective teachers as much as it is about effective instruction. And when we talk about data being down and what have you, not where we want it, that is not an indictment of anybody. It's simply a challenge every school district in the United States has now and needs a system, a way to approach that. What does it look like? Everything we do, academic, behavior, social-emotional, parent engagement, everything is done through this multi-tiered system. I'll give you examples in a moment. And we want to use data to make decisions. They help us make the right decisions the first time. And we want to have problem-solving that considers all of these factors. And a district-based team, and you already have a great one, that is responsible for monitoring the performance of all schools to determine the overall health of the district. So our definition of a healthy school or a healthy district is if a parent comes to this school district and says, "What is the probability that my child will grow or improve in this school or in this district?" We can give them the actual statistics. 85% of our kids at the beginning of the school year have improved by the end of the school year, 90%. But we have to have the data to back that up, and I'll show you a quick example in a moment. A school-based team is responsible for monitoring this health and wellness at a school level. So when you're looking at your wellness programs and your school climate, you need somebody local who understands that school and can relate the data to that school. Parents are fully engaged in problem-solving in the instruction intervention process. You already talked about student engagement, it's huge. How do we plan lessons that include all students? As opposed to waiting for some to get behind once again? Early warning systems, I talked about that being what data can we use to find kids before it's a problem? And the focus is on Tier One, which is the general education environment, and the integration of universal design for learning principles. So I'll give you an example. You may have a fourth-grade student who has dyslexia and has low levels of fluency, but is a very bright student and perfectly capable of understanding all of that content. How do we get around the reading issue, even though we're working on it? How do we neutralize that problem in order to ensure access to the content? So things like text-to-speech, speech-to-text enable students who don't have those skills but clearly have the capacity to understand the content to be able to have access. That's universal design, and that's in the general ed setting. Because those things can, once again, remove those barriers that these kinds of students, as an example, might be experiencing. District leadership is held accountable for the implementation and outcomes, and having been a school principal, school principals are held accountable for all of that at their building level. As a school principal, my evaluation every year had certain things on it. And in education, for those of you who are involved in it, you know the old phrase, "What is inspected is respected," even if you don't like it, right? So my job was to always take care of what I had to do, what I'm being held accountable for, in order then to have some discretionary time to do the fun stuff. I knew if I didn't take care of business to begin with, I wouldn't have the opportunity to do the fun stuff. So the three-tiered model is basically saying, with all the kids in A B districts, and if we have a tiered system of supports, which means increasing intensity of services for kids based upon their need, that all of our kids will meet or exceed standards. It doesn't mean that they'll meet it just with core. But if we organize our support system in a way that aligns with our capacity, then we can. What we can't have, and this is important, what we can't have in this model is a situation where more kids are not doing well in core than we have the capacity to help them. So in that case, you only have one of two issues. Strengthen core to be able to meet the needs of a broader range of students, or hire a bunch more staff to help those kids for whom core is not enough. So let's very quickly take a look at, I'm going to run through this very quickly. I realized this, Dawn, when I was, that I had all those pop-up. And so I sat in Starbucks before I came over here, and I fixed it on my computer. And after I spent 20 minutes doing that, I thought, "I'm not using my computer." So my version of it is really nice. So it's what you get for not reviewing enough, and I'm not great with inserting avatars and what have you into these presentations. So Tier One is what everybody gets. So what is everybody going to get around wellness? The school climate affects everybody. What does the instructional options look like for everybody? And everybody includes everybody, even if they're getting additional supports. So it's what does everybody get? It includes positive learning climates, culture of respect, positive interactions, motivating participatory, learning-focused environments. It also includes social-emotional learning and school climate issues. It forms the bedrock. Who is going to be a good, active, engaged learner if you're not happy in the environment you're in? That's the bottom line. Tier Two is what some kids get. And the efficiency comes in here because we take a group of kids who have the same needs and make a group of them and use evidence-based instruction for the issues that they might be struggling with. We don't do a lot of diagnostics here, and we are accurate about 70% of the time. So that is a way of providing services while we're also identifying the kids for whom those services are not enough. And what we are trying to do is to whittle down the number of kids that need one-to-one or one-to-two, because that's extremely expensive and it's extremely difficult work to do as well. And how do we intensify instruction? We look at time, and by the way, a student's academic-engaged time, the amount of time a student engages quality instruction is the best predictor of student growth. It's better than IQ, it's better than language, socioeconomic status, anything. So student engagement is so important because it is about accessing the material and accessing instruction. So time becomes our first issue. The second is focus. We narrow the focus of instruction in Tier Two to the needs that the kid has. And we might modify the type of instruction because what was being delivered just in core obviously was not meeting the needs of these students, so we have to look at adjusting the type of instruction. I want to give you an example, and they don't care that I do this. One of the school districts I'm working with now is Mashpee on the Cape. And they had issues with some of their ninth graders not achieving algebra standards. So they wanted to do a Tier Two intervention. Tier Two is primarily more time first, because some kids just need more time. They don't need specialized instruction, they just need more time. Long story short, they added two periods a day, I mean a week, of algebra instruction for kids who needed it. So instead of five, they got seven. And they initiated that last September, September of, I'm sorry, September of 2015. In January of 2016, that group of supposedly struggling students with just two more periods a week that the existing teachers taught by arranging schedule, they were outperforming the kids that did need those supports by 8%. It cost no more money, it was a schedule change, it was problem-solving. And it occurred in four and a half months. Tier Three is something very different. Tier Three are for kids that are not responding to Tier One, not responding to Tier Two, and these are students with intensive needs. And they require intensive help. It is very different from the other forms of instruction. And we can only give it in most school districts to about 6% of our kids. Some school districts have more resources than that, some do not. We can't give it typically to more than 6% of our kids. I could go through the characteristics of the instruction, but I won't, because once again, the time and that type of stuff. These are the characteristics of it, and you can see what they are. The bottom line is every one of those requires a tremendous amount more of staff time. It requires carefully organizing the student's schedule so that they don't miss other critical things. It requires reallocation of time, staff, and students in order to achieve this. And that is why we often see some of our lowest-performing students not improving, because the intensive services are not intense enough because we have too many kids that need that service. Students with disabilities are integrated into a multi-tiered system of supports, it's not a separate tier. Students with disabilities can be in Tier One, they can be in Tier Two, they can be in Tier Three, and the tiers really don't exist, it's a way of intensifying instruction. So when I was visiting some classrooms today, that there were students with disabilities in an inclusion model, they received instruction from a special education teacher. But the kind of instruction that that special education teacher did with those students was also the instruction that the general education teacher provided to those students when, in this case, she was working with them individually. So the kids were getting the same kind of intensive instruction regardless of who was working with them. And those kids are beginning to improve significantly. I won't need to go through that. Data evaluation. I'm just going to give you a couple of examples. This may not be the kind of data you have. It really doesn't matter what the data are, as long as they're, as was indicated, for the right, before the right data. But what we ask is what percent of our kids, I'm a growth mindset person. It's huge, because you have to grow until you're there. And very few of us are ever there, and the older I get and what have you, I realize, self-actualization, who made that up? I want to know at least three people who made it at that point. But these are kindergarten data, and these are the degree to which the kids are meeting kindergarten reading standards. Green is good, red is not good. If you just look from left to right, you move from a bunch of colors to almost exclusively green. That's growth. That's a healthy classroom. And you have the data to prove it. Now, if it was the reverse, kids starting out in green, I've worked with school districts where it gets worse, and one in particular that Dawn is aware of, third grade in the entire district, the longer they were in third grade, the worse the kids got. And it would be like, when a parent asks you, you know, "What is the growth potential?", I would say, "They're really good till about Halloween, and then I'd suggest you find another district." Because after Halloween, things do not look good. In this case, they do. These are some data from districts here in Massachusetts. These are, I think that's fall, it is fall data from 2015, and that was the performance of all the second-grade kids. Once again, green is good, red is needing a lot of help. And a few months later, this is the graph. And when you put data to it, what you find out is in the fall, 63% of the kids were at or above proficiency, but by January, they had jumped by 10 full percentage points. So is that a healthy school? Yes. Particularly if your student is not at the top of the green, we can show you exactly that if you come here, your kids get better. The implementation of this is go slow to go fast. Consensus, courageous conversations, getting stakeholders together, getting everybody comfortable and ready for this is extremely important, just like everything else that you're doing, and that conversation was held tonight. What we do know about educators are a couple of things that are really important. And these conclusions come from 25 years of work by Joyce and Showers on how do educators embrace change for any type of thing? They will embrace it when they clearly understand the need for it. Why would we bring something to a district that's a shiny penny, but you don't need it? And the second thing is, they perceive that, they will embrace it if they perceive they have the skills to do it or the support to get them. That's important. You can have a need, but if you have people who are afraid to risk, it's a problem. So those are the two issues we really concentrate on. Does everybody understand the need? And does everybody understand that we are not going to go faster than the support we provide to them in order to be successful at doing this? Students don't like to fail, and adults don't either. I have some things up here I'm not going to go through. You can look at them, you have it in large print. I actually can read that without my glasses, thank you. What are the district responsibilities? And they're really no different than anything else, except they're focused on supporting this effort. And each school would have a school leadership team to correspond with the district leadership team, and they basically serve that function for the school. And the building principal is critical to this. What we know from implementation science with this type of stuff at the building level is that the principal's engagement and leadership is the best predictor of whether things will be implemented well. So it's very important to have your principals comfortable and ready to do this. So two basic questions, two basic bumper stickers for my life as an educator, and a little bit of sense of why I'm passionate about this. I always ask teachers, "Are you happy with your data? And is this a school district in which you would put your flesh and blood in any classroom and be happy with it?" And if the answer to those two questions are yes, then well done. If the answer to either of those is, "I got to check on that," then maybe this is something you might want to explore. And this is also, I use this- And this is also, I use this quote a lot, do the best you can with what you know, and when you know better, do better. So there's nothing here about throwing anybody under the bus. I believe that education is offering us the biggest challenge we've ever had in the history of education. And education is more important to the future of this country than any other institution that we have. And we're starting to know better, so I think we can do better. Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much. I am just, I, thank you. I really, I will, I'm just, I know people may have comments, but I did want to say one thing, that I am most excited about the, most excited about the intensity and the decisive action that you're promoting, because in so many cases, we take a long time to do things, and we do things slowly. And I think that what your, what your, what your proposal thesis is, is that you have to act quickly, decisively, and intensively, and I really appreciate that.
So, being a data person, there are three hundred and thirty minutes in the day, sixteen hundred and forty minutes in a week, fifty-six thousand, seven hundred minutes in a year, to which fifteen thousand, six hundred are allocated to literacy. That's all we have. And every time we wait, we lose those. Academic-engaged time predicts growth the best. We're living on fixed bank account, we can't squander it. And at a certain point, we don't even have access to it. So, so those are some data about how many minutes you actually have to work with. Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
So you talk about the importance of the principals, and I'm going to assume the teachers in understanding the need for this. From what you've seen in implementation, how important is it to bring the parents along with all this? Do they generally just come, or is there a lot of work to do with parents as well?
So, very quickly, I believe that parents should be involved in every decision that affects all the kids in a building or a district, either by representation or what have you. If we're going to move to the database, quick action, not waiting, then that's kind of a shift in our way of work in some places. So I think letting parents know what to expect and ensuring that their questions are answered is very important as well. I could give you, one of the things that we did three years ago was to develop a parent engagement survey for parents as well as school staff, and we had each of them take it. And we were trying to identify what the barriers were in an MTSS model to parent-school collaboration. And what we found out, I won't go into all the details of it, but what we found out was that both sides thought the barriers for each other was the same, but not for themselves. So it was in great part a communication issue. So go slow to go fast, have courageous conversations. You're not always going to reach unanimity, but you can reach understanding.
So, thank you for this. I mean, I've heard about MTSS for a little while now, I'm just starting to wrap my head around it. You may or may not know, we have open enrollment here.
I do, yes.
And I worry that we may have some school principals who are willing to embrace it, and we may have some that believe that their philosophy already supports the mission of MTSS. And I worry about that. I don't know what the answer is.
I think it's a good worry. And, and I think it's, once again, an early warning, you know, don't wait till it's a problem and try to fix it. That's why those conversations and the comfort level have to occur upfront. I will also say, though, that I have spent time in your buildings, and I have had the opportunity to interact with your building principals. And I think that it's easier in districts to get consensus around structures for kids who struggle than necessarily kids who don't. And so, so I think that those, I think that you do have in this district some common ground on that, but you would want to explore that further so that the concerns that you have are addressed. Your leaders have to be as comfortable with this, because they're leading it, right? You know, a leader is a place that you would follow, or a leader is a person you would follow to a place you would never go by yourself. So there's a lot of trust, and that trust is given and it needs to be honored.
How does this, so again, because we talk about the different schools at the elementary level, and how does this factor in with, you know, assistance and everything? Because does it create a standard, right? Kind of across the elementary schools? I mean, if, because, I mean, something like this doesn't get inflated in one school and not another.
Yeah, right.
It's a, I mean, to me, it's an all-or-nothing endeavor. You know, because we're saying, we're talking about it from K through twelve methodology.
Pre-K through twelve, yeah.
Right, pre-K through twelve. But, because I know, you know, there's always these discussions about this school has this many assistants, this school has this many assistants. Does this help, you know, equalize all that?
It helps, I won't, I won't say equalize. What it helps is to allocate the resources based upon the need. So it might not be equal if the need is not equal. But it's tied to the demands that are being placed on that building to meet students' needs. But it also, I'm really glad you brought up that issue. One of the things that we do is, we have a triangle, and if you do this long enough, you dream triangles, you eat triangles, you wake up with triangles, is that we do a resource map. Who has X, Y, Z resources? And as we begin to become focused on student needs, those resources might be used the same, or they might be used differently, particularly if they're being used in a certain way and you're not getting the data you want. So my first question, and the things that I looked at here, was just first, who are the resources? How many people do you have to do the heavy lifting? That is the first question. And then using those people strategically is the second question. And we are really urgent about ensuring that instruction is meeting the needs of all kids, even when we're not sure who all of those kids are.
And that, that's what I have to say, I like that answer, because that's what I have to say I like a lot about it, is, again, when you have, you know, you have one school that says they don't have enough, another school that says they do, this actually provides the basis and the framework for fact-based of, well, this is why, right? We have to give you more resources, because at the time, at this time, this is the resources that you need. But those resources could change, right? So it's a constant, you know, moving, constantly moving, and it's providing facts for where we stand.
You have a real strength here. You have open enrollment. I'm from a state where that's statewide, parents have choice. So therefore, that predicts some movement around. And if kids are moving around, it's probable resources are going to have to move around, because you can't have kids moving around and the resources staying the same, right? And you also have, because of the pedagogy in your different, particularly elementary schools, being unique across that, you have kids moving around, and you have people and approach to education that both influence meeting student needs. So all of that is wonderful. I think a system to help organize all that in a way that has the best outcomes for kids would be desirable, that's all.
I actually have three questions, but the first two I'd probably like to ask Debbie and Dawn. So, oh, cannot hear it? Okay. So, we're talking about that, MTSS, right? You know, when we had some mass study, okay, you know, discussion. And first of all, I think, I would like to thank Dr. George, he did this very wonderful presentation, a lot of first slides, I cannot agree more. Okay, so, but, so this is a part of the project our school will do. I mean, the strategy change or whatever, and this is, Dr. George is consultant, or I wanted to understand what's the relationship between us, so.
So, Dr. George Bash is a consultant, he's going to be working with us to help us think through as we look to see where each school is, where its strengths are about implementing MTSS, and how will we move forward with this at the district level and at the school level?
All right, okay, thank you. The, you know, so, I've seen this, you know, very wonderful presentation, but, you know, look at it, most of the slide, you know, they're, they're answered, there's some why, and what would be the feature, what will be the goal, we're going to reach that. But there's something I'm really curious about is, you, can you give us a simple example? How this whole thing going to run? And just one simple example, how do you test the kindergarten? How do you decide? Of course, we as a district, maybe some of the team will give a strategy or maybe different questionnaire, different methodology, whatever, but I really curious about.
How to test?
Yeah, how do you, you mentioned once, but how, my major question is, how do you make this work? What is, you know, so, we're talking about, can you give, can you give a very simple example?
Yeah, I'll give you a very simple example.
Thank you.
If I answered your entire question, I would still be here in the morning while I'm supposed to be in the next one. And I'll just give you an example from Michael. For all kindergarteners who come into school, we, oh, sorry.
Thank you, I was wondering, for all of our, for the kindergarteners who come into school, thank you. Within the first twenty days of school, we administer a screener to them. And the screener is looking at literacy, and it is looking at behavior, not behavior problems, but their engagement stuff. And we get data on who is above the risk level high and who is at risk. And we don't do anything, because kindergarteners are still developing. And after twenty days, another twenty, we reassess only those kids who do not do well the first time, because they're smaller numbers. And we do it one more time, because it takes that much time for kids who are adjusting to kindergarten to be able to show their skills. But by October, we know which kids are truly at risk. And this screener predicts with ninety-three percent accuracy who is going to be struggling at the end of the year if something isn't done. So we then look at those kids, we assess their skills, and we then modify our kindergarten schedule to intensify services for those kids. Because our goal is at the end of kindergarten, that ninety-seven percent of kindergarteners are at or above first-grade beginning standards. Because we can handle additional services for that difference. We can't handle fifteen or twenty percent of kindergarteners not being ready for first grade. So that's a simple example.
That's very great, but there is another concern. What about you have, you know, the first twenty days, or maybe one month or two months, you find out twenty percent, or maybe fifteen percent, or maybe ten percent of the kids already beyond the end of the kindergarten level?
Oh, for those kids? So, that goes back to our district or school approach to how do we meet kids instructional and social-emotional needs at their level? So the question becomes, in a multi-tiered system, for our students who are accelerated, they would get smaller group targeted at their level. We would have to know what the distribution is, or let us say that at a school, it was the majority of the kids, then the pacing of that core instruction in kindergarten might be accelerated. It all depends on how many have what needs.
But what could be the action? But what could be the action?
What could be the action?
So, do you have the action plan, or the, you know, our administrative will plan something with the teacher together, or?
Yeah, in one of the slides, I identified lesson planning. And that lesson planning is designed to align instruction to the needs of kids. That is the point where the student performance level and the instruction are leveled.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Paul? I'm, oh, yes, I'm sorry, Dawn.
Well, that was my, I was going to wonder out loud, I can't imagine we don't already do some level of this to identify where the resources are needed.
You do.
So I guess my question is, how much work would it be to align with the MTSS for us?
You have, and part of our, spending a couple of days here was to ask that question. What is your readiness to do this? So in terms of your structures and what have you, you have a number of things. As I said, MTSS is nothing new. You already had different levels of instruction and what have you. What was evident is that all, and let me use this analogy, and it's not necessarily fair, but it's the best one I can think of right now. You have many of the components, pieces of a puzzle on the table, they're just not connected yet in a way that makes them integrated, so that kids who need more services are getting coordinated services, and not just some of this, some of this, some of this, and some of this. The other part of it, I think, is any time that we remove students from a classroom to give them instruction someplace else, as opposed to in the classroom, it really reduces the probability that those students are going to be able to do well in the general ed classroom. So I think that you have tremendous resources, I think people are doing very, very hard work, I think by integrating this, you can get more bang for your buck. Does that make sense? Okay.
So Eileen had asked a question about, you know, how we actually do it, and you answered the question, but I remember seeing the slide that had the green and red.
Yeah, exactly.
So is that the process by which you've generated that data?
That would be one, yes. And I'll go back to the example I gave at Mashpee. There ended up being twenty-seven students in ninth grade that the instruction was intensified for. And we monitored their progress, and we didn't have fancy tools. We monitored their progress based upon their performance in class and on tests, and other ways that teachers were determining if they had acquired the skills. And that was all that was done. That was, in this case, that was all that was needed. But it was, we identified it early, we took action quickly, and we collected data to see if our decision about what to do was working. And if it isn't, then we don't want to wait to report cards, we don't want to wait six weeks. That's, you know, six weeks is ten thousand minutes of lost instruction.
Diane, another question. I hear you go slow, go fast. That's, it's critical that the principals are on board with this. You said a few times, it's important to avoid reaching capacity that you don't have, in fact, the infrastructure to support. It's very important to try to avoid reaching a capacity that you can't support, yes. And so when I was reading the report that was in our packet, I started to panic, because it seems like we have reached capacity in some sense with our English-language learners who are even perhaps being over-identified as having disabilities. And I wanted you to address the, perhaps urgency in this district that we're at capacity or maybe we're not, I wanted to get your guidance on that. I, I wanted to get your guidance on that.
Um, and I, and I wanted to be transparent and, and give you my best answer. I just, if, if I made a recommendation to you right now to increase capacity, it would be to look at whether or not you're using core instruction capacity to its fullest. Generally, classrooms, right. There, there might be a tendency here to um, for kids who are struggling to have someone else do the instruction. And I think that there's some gap there to increase the capacity of, around making tier one core instruction more effective. And therefore having fewer students who need additional need. And we're all struggling with that. But the biggest issue is avoiding, to the greatest degree possible, kids getting behind. I think the three most important grades in a traditional kind of school system are kindergarten, whatever your first grade of middle school is, say six, and whatever your first grade of high school is. Because those are the grade levels in which kids not only have to continue to grow, but make a significant transition. And if they don't make that transition, it will last with them for that next level. So I am a, if I was asked, what is the most important grade level in a school district? I would say kindergarten for literacy. They're not behind much when they come to kindergarten. And we, we have a lot of flexibility and creativity. And I, I'm a huge believer in kindergarten is the launching pad. And whatever we do well lasts, whatever it doesn't work, it lasts. So we don't have resources to put equally across all twelve grades in most schools. And in the schools that I work with, we disproportionately allocate resources to K one, six, and nine. As an example, kids in middle school often don't understand the concept of credit. They don't understand that if you don't make cred, you can have the best grade point average in the world. If you don't meet the minimum credit, you're not graduating. So credits are the first coin in the realm. Yet, we don't do much in middle school about acculturating kids to credits. If you don't get a good grade in middle school, eh. But if you don't get a good grade, you are now in credit recovery. And the consequences are huge and they're severe. So why don't we prepare kids in middle school for that concept of, the consequences change in high school. I advocate giving kids in middle school pseudo credits from the time they get into sixth grade. Get them used to, there's a relationship between the grade they get and whether they make a credit. As opposed to, uh, I didn't really realize that. So those kinds of, some of these things are not rocket science. They're ways to increase capacity in little amounts if everyone doesn't. The other alternative is that doesn't happen, then a few people have to do stuff in tremendous amounts. And you're trying to catch kids up, and we talked about that from the beginning. So, really good questions, by the way.
Okay, let's, let's do one more, go ahead.
So after all this discussion, where, where are we as a district in, you know, in implementing this? Are we, are we moving forward to start next year? I mean, you know, what is the next step? I mean, we, so we brought someone in to, to teach, I mean, I, really just to evaluate, right? But is there training required and, and then what, so what are our next steps? And, and what is, what's our timeline? You know, so if they say three to five years, where's our timeline of year one and then going forward?
There now, I'm on, it's a great question. We, I think we are realizing that if we want to focus as much energy as we need to focus on our tier one instruction, it's gonna take a slightly, we're gonna need to take a slightly different approach in terms of this massive rollout. And so actually, Deb and I spent yesterday afternoon with about sixteen elementary educators looking at how do we utilize our new gift of time on Thursday afternoons for our district wide days? And what do those look like? Um, and the, the number one thing that elementary teachers, we had two hundred or so respond to the survey, was reaching the needs of all learners was the number one thing that they identified as something they need help and support with. And so um, we had such an amazing conversation yesterday about all of the different ways that we could start to think about that and, and gain traction around that. We've worked extensively with the principals this year, along with Dr. Batch and one of his colleagues, Dr. Kukic, to really help us understand what, what are the components, where are we currently, those pieces? And we've, we've had a number of conversations. It's clear to us that we have some work to do, probably from a cultural end, around the language that we use to talk about kids who struggle, to um, the concept of our kids, my kids, your kids. And just the way we think about how do we provide um, instruction to meet the needs of kids in a variety of contexts. And one of the things that Dr. Batch noticed and heard from folks is that in a lot of cases, it's happening, not necessarily in general education, it's happening in other settings and it's not necessarily translating. So we think we have a lot more integration type of work to do. And so putting a timeline on it would be kinda hard in terms of anything specific. The next year, the focus is really gonna be on tier one core instruction. And how do we really prepare our teachers? That's kind of a long answer.
I'm sorry, I'm just confused, so does, so tier one instruction, that means we're starting to, to just work on it and then?
That's gonna be the first place that we need to focus. Mm-hmm. To shore up. Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Dr. Batch, really, thank you very much. Um, moving on to, oh, ah, Mr. Kavanaugh. Um, the ABRHS high school, the high school handbook. This is a first read to review changes.
Hi, thank you for, all for your time tonight. Uh, again, my name is Peter Kavanaugh. I'm one of the deans of students at Acton Boxville Regional High School. I believe um, in your packet, you have this as your second appendix, um, the proposed changes to the handbook. So I'll just go through the suggested changes one by one. First one uh, focuses on change to our language about the lockdown procedures with the department, with the district's adoption of the ALICE protocol. The language would reflect that because the lockdown procedure is part of ALICE now. Number two uh, pertains to final grades, specifically the designation of how much the final assessment is weighted as it put in a mid, in a half-year course as opposed to a full-year course. Number three uh, deals with the high school transcript, with the list of things that would appear on the transcript in terms of uh, awards and elected offices and membership in honor societies. One of the ones we'd be adding is the seal of biliteracy and then taking out uh, the World Languages Awards because that falls under awards night recipients. Number four uh, is dress code. The specific change deals with the last line there, adding um, that students would be asked to change or cover clothing and that clothing, that, adding to it that clothing which would cause a disruption to learning. Number five is about test post moment, which one of our student representatives spoke so well to earlier, changing from four to three. Number six uh, pertains to fines and the addition of who those fines are paid to. With the new structure, it'd be the campus support staff. Number seven is senior class dues. Again, this was to reflect um, not just graduation exercises when senior classes are, are not paid, but also senior events would be affected. Number eight is with the student identification cards. With the new system we have in the high school, again, our faculty support center and campus support staff have taken a larger role. Nine and ten on the list are very similar. Number nine focuses on athletics and the extracurricular agreement that we have. Number ten uh, focuses on all the other extracurriculars that the students have. Um, and particularly, specifically, it uh, more defines what use or consume means in terms of the underlying phrase and with regards to the breathalyzer. Number eleven, the last proposed change, uh, has to do with a list of seven steps for suicide prevention awareness and education and supports that we'd have. That would actually be another appendix into the high school handbook. Following those eleven changes, we have technical and grammatical errors, uh, grammatical edits with time in mind. I, I don't think I need to read through those. If anyone would like me to, I'd be more than happy to. But those are just pertaining to typos or things that we need to change.
Thank you, do you have any comments or questions? Yes.
It's really picky, but, and maybe because we're only seeing part of the text. In number ten, there's a single asterisk defined, but I don't see where it is in the paragraph. And maybe it's in another part, I don't know.
Yep, that might be a typo.
Anyone else? Yes.
I just have a, sort of a philosophical question. I wonder, um, looking at items nine and ten, they're very similar for athletes and just participants in extracurriculars. And I wonder if there's ever been discussion about combining them, just are students involved in anything? Because I think sometimes people may feel that athletes are treated differently or singled out or um, focused on as a group. And if, if the expectations are the same, whether you're in PC or field hockey or, you know, the video club, whatever, if the expectations are the same, I don't, I don't know that it benefits them to be separated.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah.
I am glad about the addition that you made to nine and ten.
Mm-hmm.
I guess, I, I'm just confused about the wording, may impact the school's investigation of an incident.
Mm-hmm.
Do the kids understand what that would mean or it, it just, I, I, yeah, I guess I'm just confused about that, that wording.
So it, sorry, can you clarify your question? I'm not sure.
So I'm trying to understand, so it says refusing to take a breathalyzer when presented with the opportunity, which is great that we're actually putting that in there.
Mm-hmm.
To do so could or may impact the school's investigation of an impact, uh, uh, of an incident? Is it, I guess, I guess I find it vague in the way of, is it impacting the investigation of an incident or the result of the investigation? Do you see what I mean?
So, so it would impact, in terms of the investigative process and the, it would impact that part and, and what we were, we have a memorandum of understanding. And so we rely on that police report as well for that, those types of incidents as too.
Quite, but it doesn't just impact, well, I guess it impacts the investigation, but it impacts the um, the response that the school's going to do.
Yep, but there's al, there's also a lot of other factors in terms of that uh, process that we take into account as well. So it's just one of, one of the things.
Okay.
I have some question about number three, um, high school trans, transcript. I think I kind of echo Christina, Christina mentioned something, I don't know if it's exactly same. So, oh, the first question is add the seal of, how do you say that, ballyturity and delete the war, delete world language awards, that, can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. So it, my understanding to the best of my ability is that um, they, there used to be a separate night for uh, the World Languages Department where they were recognized and so it needed to be uh, singled out there. But uh, since then, it's been incorporated into the awards night recipients and so no other um, departments' awards are singled out. So that's the reason for the deletion.
Okay, that's great. So another thing is um, um, uh, I, I would like to mention something like Christina mentioned that. And those probably, we, we're talking about here, all those things will be displayed in uh, any high schoolers' transcript, right? At the, you know, mark or somewhere place. I think we have this very wide district and I did see a lot of value, very valuable things happen around. It's uh, other than this, okay? Those, of course, is the core, very important, I definitely agree with. There's something, I think, the, the, the one girl who um, organized a suicide prevention walk outside of our school, those very, very, very important events, a very brief, um, I don't know what to say, like, like event she organized. Can, can we, is that, is that possible for us to consider into this award? And give her the recognize, I mean, like the credit or, you know, the honor for her to spend a lot of time or effort doing this? Something like that, special award or, you know, so, I mean, um, couple of, couple of um, maybe one, one month ago, we have some high school came over to deliver the, some kind of project, like um, save the environment. I called some, like, you know, what, what should I say? It's like really um, trying to uh, use the fountain, get the environmental, uh, those are very exceptional.
Yeah.
I, I know that.
No, I'm just saying, I think Deb has a, has a, a response.
And I think maybe Pete can also respond. So number three is very specific to a student's high school transcript. And so I think awards night and what goes on and is denoted on a student's transcript are two different things. And so tonight, we're talking about number three, which is the high school's transcript.
Yep.
And so those are wonderful things that a student can also put on their applications to colleges, all the kinds of things that they've been involved in and other kinds of events and activities and awards they've received. But if you're talking specifically about awards night, that's not what they're talking about as proposed changes to the handbook.
Correct, yep, right.
Yeah, uh, hold on, okay. So my um, my point is, why not those on transcript? Those are very excellent point and they're doing, they're using a lot of effort. Our organizer doing very feature, like, you know, the whole community involved with that. That's so very wonderful, why not?
Yeah.
What's it noted on it, student's academic transcript?
Yeah, so the focus is academics with the transcript and sent off. We have a, a lot of other vehicles in which we can honor students for their accomplishments in, in terms of, I think, what you're talking about at the high school.
Yeah, if, if, if I may add, um, in, in the particular case of the student who organized the walk, she, she did that, uh, she got um, uh, credit for another uh, uh, group. I, I don't know if it was um, Girl Scouts or something else. But, but um, that is the kind of thing that won't go unnoticed. She, she now has something to put on her resume. It's not necessarily, it's something she can add to her resume that, that in addition to her academic. So it's, so uh, I, I think your, your fear is that there are some students doing great things that aren't getting recognized through this. But I, I, I would like to lay that fear a little bit by saying that there are other ways for those students to get recognized for the great things that they do.
Any more comments, um, we move on to the next.
Thank you all for your time.
Yeah.
That, um, thank you, Pete. So this is a first read for the handbook changes. This is something that you do as a committee, need to approve. And so at our June eighth meeting, uh, it would be the hope that you will approve those changes and then the high school can go ahead and print up the handbook for it next year.
All right, our director of facilities, JD Head, will come and explain the new bus lease and we will begin asking, and we will be asking for your vote tonight on it. It is a time sensitive issue.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, so what you have before you tonight is a, a new bus lease. We, our intention would be to uh, roll out thirty of our old buses and bring in thirty new ones. This lease document is identical to the last two cycles. So this will be the third cycle that we've done with the same company, um, who, they've won the bid every time. And um, they're pretty much identical. The buses are uh, same make and model. The only difference on these buses that we will have, that we currently don't have, is live GPS. And the cool thing about that is we'll be able to, uh, once we get the bugs worked out, we'll be able to hopefully put like a smart application in parents' hands that, that will show them like where their bus is as it's coming down the road, which would be a nice benefit to people in the winter and bad weather, certainly. But aside from that, I'm happy to answer any questions. But aside from that, I'm happy to answer any questions. The bids came in under what we had budgeted. You know, so we submit the budget in, you know, in November, December. And the price per bus came in under what we had budgeted prior to. So I'll double check with Claire. I think we've already adjusted that, the current budget.
So that's good news. One, there was some language in here that I liked seeing. And I had to read it twice to make sure I understood it was, I'm reading it right. But we're reserving the right from 30 days prior notice to reduce the number of units in the event that we reduce the number of bus routes in connection with the time change. So I like that that language is in there.
Good. Good.
Waiting. Okay, so if there aren't any more comments, I'm looking for a motion. Uh, yeah. So I'm looking for a motion to accept this new policy as proposed. Oh, am I reading the wrong thing? I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. My first night. Okay. I am looking for a motion to approve the proposed bus lease between ABRSD and New England Transit Sales Incorporated. Is there a motion? Second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, passes unanimously. JD, do you have the solar?
Yep.
Yep. All right, speak in English. Sure. Okay.
Well, if I can, Kate's here also. So if there's any technical questions, I'll lean on her as well. So when, a couple of weeks ago, the school committee gave us authorization to terminate some net metering agreements that were from last year. At that time, I kind of mentioned, I was like, actually Kate and I are going to have a conference call the very next day with another company who was reaching out to us because they lost their public dance partner, if you will, in their agreement, their project. We had that call. It looked like it was, you know, a really positive project, something that would be beneficial to us, little to absolutely zero risk. And so we put it in motion. This would be the net metering agreement there. This document has been vetted by Beth Greenblatt. I don't know if anyone recalls her, but she was here a year ago talking about net metering in general. Yep, and so this is a first read document. This is a very small project in comparison to the projects we were looking at before. We were looking at dedicating about 80% of our total electrical consumption in those projects a year ago. This is only like 15% of our total production. And it would generate some revenue for the district that we currently don't have. But happy to answer anything if there's anything there. And hopefully Kate can help me if I don't know the answer.
I'm just curious, and maybe you told us this last time, why do they need a public partner?
It's the benefits of a public tax ID number. Makes the project better to finance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead.
I've been through the informational wringer. And I'm on board. If we could do more, I'd ask that we do more.
Thanks, Paul. Okay.
Thanks, JD. Can I jump ahead to the sustainability policy? Because we have some guests here. If you guys wanted to come up? Yep. And then we'll just go back to our regularly scheduled agenda.
Hi again, I'm Chantel.
And I'm Anna. And we came and presented for you a couple of months back about our Get on Tap initiative. And we actually just came from the Senior Project Expo Night and presented for them. And now that's been incorporated into the sustainability policy that I believe is in front of you. Yeah, thank you so much.
So the policy is on for a vote tonight. For second, this is the second read. So Bridget, do you want, oh, go ahead. Christina.
I just want to let you, as a committee, know that on April 25, 2017, I filed a disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest form as required by General Law 268A, 23B, 3. I did sign the statement at the end of that form saying, taking into account the facts that I have disclosed above, I feel that I can perform my official duties objectively and fairly. And that's because of one of the people involved with the policy being my daughter. I went through the process of filling out this form. But I do feel like I'm comfortable taking a vote on the policy and just wanted to make sure that my fellow committee members are comfortable with me doing that.
Bridget, do you want to say, speak to this at all? Or we could just take a vote?
I have no problem with that.
I don't either.
So we have not received any comments from any of the committee members on this policy. It is in the materials. And it's 15.2.3, for those who want to skip ahead on their iPads. But we were very impressed by your contribution. And thank you so much for having us think about this. So there are no other questions on the policy.
So I wasn't here at the last meeting. And I did send you a couple of things today. So I'm sorry.
They came today?
So I'll just, yeah.
I haven't even looked at my email today.
Like early this morning. So I just wanted to, just looking ahead to some, like, procedures that would, or guidelines that would flow from this policy, I just wanted to highlight the concern around potential limiting or elimination of access to water for those who have medical conditions. Dehydration, hypo or hypoglycemia. So just a red flag. I don't know if that's appropriate for the policy or not. But I wanted to just float that.
So was there something in here specifically that concerned you? That those would be limit, that there would be a limit? Was there a particular language you were concerned about in the policy itself? Or it's just something you want to highlight?
There was. And if you give me a minute, I can find the email I sent you.
I mean, it talks about promoting consumption of local water and other goods.
Yeah, so it was under the resource conservation. There was a, I'm quoting, "We prioritize environmentally preferable products and practices," which I agree with. I'm totally in favor of this. But I wanted to, it concerned me that perhaps if we prioritize that, we're not prioritizing like a medical condition that would require access to water that might be eliminated based on that priority.
Well, in the, I guess, I don't really see a conflict. If you look at the second sentence in the intro paragraph, it talks about in concert with fiscal responsibility, health and safety. So, but certainly if there are procedures drafted around this, we can bring that to the folks that would draft the procedures to make sure there's no problem with it. So you weren't proposing any specific language changes, right?
I was not. I just wanted to flag it as a potential concern.
That's good. Thank you.
So are you comfortable voting on it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, Mary. Move to approve the sustainability policy?
Yeah. We've done some pretty extensive work with Acton Water District.
I'm sorry, this is, if you'd like to come up and, I mean, I just, I think that, let's let them talk. Yes, you can definitely come up and comment. But it needs to, yeah.
Excuse me, my name is Mark Munson. I'm a resident in Acton. I've had the opportunity to do a lot of research into the water quality in Acton, especially as compared with Concord, who gets their water from a different source than Acton does. I've had associates who are chemical experts, family members who work for the EPA. They've looked at the water quality. They've given me a lot of advice that would suggest that telling students in Acton to drink the tap probably isn't the best advice. If we got our water from Concord, which is coming from a lake source, wonderful. But Acton gets it from a groundwater source. It's just not as good. In fact, the general consensus is you shouldn't drink the water. You're probably better off drinking bottled water from an external source. You definitely, it's not a great idea to even shower in steamy waters because vaporizes the water. So over the long term, you get exposure to things you probably shouldn't be exposed to. These are colorless, odorless, tasteless things that you couldn't tell them apart in a taste test. So before you make a recommendation, you really ought to do a very detailed analysis of the water quality that you're using. That's all I want to say.
Christina?
I'd like to ask if we could ask JD to comment on that? Because I do know we've been through an extensive process this year of testing all of the water in all of our schools on a regular basis.
So we do test the water. We test it extensively. I personally believe Acton Water District supplies our community with outstanding water. And I have no reason to believe otherwise. Our testing, our reports, the reports we receive back are all the testing, et cetera. Now granted, that last round of testing was mainly looking at heavy metals, right? I'm not sure if there's other things that this gentleman is referring to. But we do full tests, you know, like, as well as, Acton Water District also does their own periodic testing. So, exactly. So, you know, I don't really have any reason to believe anything otherwise.
We do our own independent water testing, right? So we're not relying on Acton Water District testing results. We do our own independent testing, right? And so, just to be clear, we're not always taking the town's recommendation.
That's correct, yeah.
Yes, Eileen?
I think I should say this, you know, I really love two girls. They came here this is second time. And they have really great idea to trying to save the earth, have something really, project going on. But I should say this earlier. I really do not, I love to see all those sugar bottles and all those sugary things, maybe with the plastic bottle, go away. For the water part, this is so convenient sometimes for the people who really need water, but without the water bottle. Or they do not want to drink the fountain. So I'm going to vote for no.
Did you want to respond to that? Or you don't have to?
Yeah, so we've also paired a lot of our work in creating this policy with a promotional week and events, hoping to educate the community on ways that they can get tap water with easy access. And so hopefully, I totally understand what you're saying with convenience of bottled water. And we thought it would be a great opportunity as a school and as an educational institution to teach kids habits that are more sustainable than using the plastic source. So that was a big part of our project. And we feel that we did a pretty good job creating that awareness in the community. And additionally, yeah, the education is a huge piece of our project. And we would never want to do something, we'd never want to take something away from people if we felt like it would negatively impact them. We did all of our extensive research in order to show that we thought this would truly be a benefit to the community in the long run. So, yeah, thank you.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not reading the policy as a ban. It's just talking about being smart, right? It's not banning bottles if someone has to use a bottle. It's just saying, let's just start thinking of better ways to acquire water, right? It's more of a general policy, not a specific, we're not doing what Concord did, which is no, we're not selling any water bottles.
Paul, did you want to say something?
I push back a little bit on the bottled water being a preferred choice. Because my understanding is that bottled water lacks certain elements or minerals that are important for your body to absorb. So when you're drinking bottled water, you're not getting those minerals. And you're not necessarily getting the benefit of the water that you're drinking.
Can I add?
I think also on the topic of health in bottled water, most of the plastic bottles that are sold in the school are PET number one plastic, which has phthalates. And when not refrigerated properly at a good cold temperature, the phthalates tend to leach into the water. And those can be endocrine disruptors, which are particularly riskful for youth who are adolescents. Endocrine disruptors can be bad at that time. So we don't want to scare anyone with the health. We're only asking really for reduction right now. But to, when we're on the topic of health, bottled water isn't necessarily the healthy product that it's advertised as for certain circumstances.
Can I just back up three steps as well? If you look at the policy that we're being asked to vote on tonight, just looking at the bullet points, we're talking about energy conservation, high-performance school buildings, education and engagement. And that's around natural connections, cultivating and understanding of environmentally sustainable practices, et cetera. Resource conservation, so promoting resource conservation and efficient use of resources, using local resources where possible. That's what we're talking about in this policy. It's not a ban on bottled water. Water is mentioned, I think, in one or two places. It's not a water policy. It's a general sustainability policy, which the district has been practicing many of these things for years and years. So this is really memorializing that.
Mary? I'd just like to say my motion still stands. My motion still stands. There was not, now there is. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so Eileen voted no, yes. And any abstentions? Thank you. No, I'm sorry, no one abstained? And we had one no and then everyone yes. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Amy. Back to the agenda. And if I may, with the committee's chair's permission, I'll do number 11 and 13 quickly back to back before turning it over to Deb for the vote. These next three items are seeking your vote of approval in your packet. This evening is an outline of the FY18 Educational Cooperative, or TEC, bid. This is an annual bid. We are a member of TEC. And it essentially is a service bid, goods and service bid, that allows us to partner with other districts for greater cost efficiency. You see the outline of the respective, the bidding and the companies that it's been awarded to. And we're simply looking for your vote of approval this evening on the FY18 Education Cooperative bid.
Move to approve? I'm sorry, Mary moved. Katie seconded, yes. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you. And also in your packet, there is a letter that includes an outline of the PTSO gift to McCarthy Town School in the amount of $1,385.43. And that is a gift that will be used for art integration. And so this evening, looking for your vote of approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the PTSO gift?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so Deb. Deb is going to explain to us the new lease for the Discovery Museum.
So this is a license agreement. It's not new. This is something we do every year. It's just an update of a previous agreement. But probably important to tell you that this will most likely be the last year that we have this agreement. The Discovery Museum is doing some new building and some restrengthening of their spaces. And so they will no longer need our space. In fact, they will probably move out sometime in January. They have a small section of the kitchen area of the old Miriam Building, the admin building, that they use just to store some of the materials so they can replenish the kits. And in exchange, over the years, each year, we receive about $3,600 worth of programs from the Discovery Museum. So it's been a wonderful mutual beneficial agreement. But this will most likely be our last agreement with the Discovery Museum.
Do I have a motion to approve the FY18 Discovery Museum lease?
Move to approve.
Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Item number 14, the budget update, very briefly, of two items. One, Boxborough Town Meeting, of course, has occurred. And thank you for Mary, for your presentation and your work in helping advance our FY18 budget now collectively through the two town meetings. So great news as we move forward with planning for FY18. Item 14.2 is the Moody's Investor Service Report. In your packet is really fairly fresh off the press just last week, this transpired. And it is an update of Claire, who's unable to be here this evening. She's at a Masbo meeting and function. Spent a lot of time working to put together the financial information for this call. And I had the pleasure to join her and Marie with receipt of this call. In short, it is a copy of the most recent credit opinion provided by Moody's. As you'll see, or when you have a chance to take a look, and for members of the community, it's affirmed the AA2 rating of the district. So ultimately, the rating has not changed from where we have been currently situated, but the negative outlook that was upon us has. And as they note in their report, that's largely due to our return to a structural, what they're calling a structurally balanced operation, coupled with growth in revenues. So a lot of information in the report, but just a couple of other things. First off, just please be very mindful of the fact that AA2 rating is very good for school districts. It's my understanding from our treasurer that few districts in and around this area share in this assessment. You'll also note in the report that it outlines credit strengths for us as a district, and that includes our sizable tax base here within the respective towns, low unemployment, strong credit profile for the towns, and modest debt burden. You also will note in the report that there are a few factors that could lead ultimately to a downgrade in this rating, and that includes reliance on reserves to balance our budgets, as well as possible decline in the tax base or growth in the debt burden. And so in short, this is good news. It's a very positive outlook in terms of the direction we're heading. And of course, the relevance for this in this rating is if in the foreseeable future we are looking to bond for possible capital building projects, this will be very helpful towards that end. So I'm happy to take any questions if you have them, and I'll try my best to answer them. And if I can't, I'll get you the answers with Claire's assistance.
Yeah, Paul?
So the report says it's an A, capital A, small a, two rating. And I don't know the structure, but is that the highest rating you can get? Or is it one tier below? I mean, is capital A, capital A, a higher rating? Where are we? I hear it's good, but is it the top, or is it the next one down? So I wish Claire was here because she could provide that greater accuracy. So I'm not going to try and make up what that scale is. I'll get back to you on exactly what that looks like. We do actually have a list, it wasn't in your packet though, of what the ratings are for other surrounding districts. And that might be also interesting for folks to see as well, to couple with that.
I might be wrong, Paul, but I think it's the equivalent of a AAA. I think the different rating agencies have slightly different acronyms. So I think it's the top, and I think it's the same, as you hear AAA a little more often.
Yeah, I just pulled it up, and it is. It's the top.
So you are up for anything?
Item number 15, I'll take the first part, the master plan and school building project update. Not a lot to report from the MSBA in terms of an update. Work is beginning underway in the background around enrollment projections. That is one of the next tasks, as well as the completion of an educational profile questionnaire, both that are due the beginning part of July. So members of the administrative team have begun work on that, and we will keep you updated as we make our way through those respective pieces. The enrollment, the enrollment piece specifically, as you know, is a very important factor as we look to project out the longer-term estimates for enrollment. And we will partner with MSBA every step of the way around getting to that number.
Okay, so the next is the District Master Plan Committee. And Mary or?
I'll start.
Okay.
So we've been meeting and doing a great deal of outreach and getting community input. We have come up with a report, a presentation and a recommendation that will be brought to you for the June 8 meeting. It should be in your packets on June 2. So a great deal of work. And we think we've met for the last time, unless as we finalize the materials, we need to just go back for any clarification to the group.
That presentation was excellent. It was well laid out. The question and answers, at least in the session that I went to, went very, very well. So it was, I can only imagine the amount of work that went into that, but I think it was worth it. So thank you.
Thank you. I hope everyone on the committee had a chance to see it online, if you didn't attend one of the forums. Christina, do you want to add anything?
Sure. Thank you, Paul. It was a great experience, I think, running all those forums. And I was really pleased with the people who came and their level of engagement that they had with the process, how respectful they were of the work that we have done so far, and the next steps moving ahead. So I look forward to our recommendations and the next steps. Really, if I can just continue into covering the ABRSD Building Committee. So I've agreed to chair that committee. And in your packet, you'll see the same memo that was in here the last time. So this is a second, sort of a second read, to vote to approve the Building Committee as formed. This is a list of all different people who we have gotten to agree to volunteer, and they fit into different categories as required by MSBA. We have met the requirements for MSBA in terms of the numbers of people and the makeup and their backgrounds. We are hoping to still add additional architecture and construction expertise to our committee, but we can do that, and we'll just have to notify the MSBA. So you have the list in your packet, and I'd like to ask for your vote of approval.
This is our second read. Please.
So in that timing will work fine. Right now, we're targeting a June 14 kickoff for the Building Committee.
Okay, so this is a second read of this proposed new committee. So we would be asking for your vote tonight. Is there a motion to approve the composition and voting status of the School Building Committee as proposed?
Move to approve.
Is there any discussion? Oh.
One thing that I should explain, we have agreed that every member on the Building Committee will have voting status. You can structure it differently. And that's not in this memo, I don't think, so. Oh, it is, okay. You know that memo I wrote? Anyway, clearly, I have someone improving on my work, so thank you, Beth.
Okay, so there's no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, so this moves us into Subcommittee Reports, Budget. Christina?
We have not met since our last meeting.
All right, and Policy. The first policy, which is a second read tonight, is the Memorial's policy. It is a new policy, but it is our second read. Do you want to address anything, Dawn?
I can, yes. The, one of the things, there are some underlined phrases. I don't even know what page this is on your, in your giant packet. There are some underlined words and phrases that after some consultation with Riverside around the policy, they had made with suggestions. So we had brought that back to the Policy Subcommittee. And I know Bridget can speak to this, but I don't know whether folks will be comfortable looking at it as a second read, or whether you'd like to call it a first read or not. So defer to you on that certainly.
Any feelings from the committee? Yep. So I think it seems fine, especially with Riverside's guidance. I think they're experts in this area, and so I would still support voting for it tonight. Yep. Any other thoughts? Okay, so I'm asking for a vote. Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And abstentions? Thank you. The next policy is a second read on the naming district facilities. Dawn? Nope, nothing? Any other comments? Okay, so I'm asking for a motion. Move to approve? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstentions? No? Okay, great. And then the, we just did this, okay, so Student Activities Accounts. This is Bridget.
That's me, yep. So, and Diane, thanks. I just saw your email. I just looked, and I see your questions on this one, which I think are the only questions that we got. So Diane had a question about an asterisk that appears under section four. Yep, and she didn't see where that refers. That refers to the note at the very end that talks about an audit being done by someone other than the principal, so I think that's why that is there. And then your next question was about inactive accounts and who would investigate. That would be our treasurer, who would keep track of the inactive accounts. And then on the third question, Diane asked about the note at the very end that refers to districts with a large number of schools may rotate through the audit process. And the question was, what does DESC, what do they consider a large number of schools? I don't know the answer to that. I don't know what they consider. But we rotate through. We've got three accounts, so it's one every three years that they do. We can follow up with Claire and see if she knows the answer to that question. So thank you for those. So those were the questions, so there are no other comments that I'm aware of unless somebody at the table has any.
You mentioned the, Diane had brought up an issue about the asterisk on item four?
Yes. The reference to the asterisk is the note at the very end of that policy. It doesn't have an asterisk next to it, which we'll correct.
Oh, okay, yeah, that was the.
That is what the reference is for.
Oh, that, no, okay, got it. Yep, okay.
Any more comments or questions? Okay, looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? 16.2.5, this is just an FYI revision to the use of facilities procedures. We actually don't vote on procedures, but they are in here just for your information. 16.2.6, this is the homework policy, and I think, Bridget, you wanted to talk to?
Yeah, this is just an FYI. So homework's been discussed a lot in the district at various schools over the course of the year. And I just wanted to give a heads up that the Policy Subcommittee will be looking at this. We haven't yet, but we'll be looking at it in connection with the building leaders, et cetera. So I just wanted to give a heads up that that would be coming.
Okay, great. Outreach. Christina?
We have not met, other than doing all the building outreach that we've done. And probably have one or two more monthly updates to take us through, probably just one at the end of the year, and that should be going out soon.
Okay, moving on to School Committee Member Reports. ALG has not met, and I don't think there's a plan to meet until summer or next September. BLF, Mary?
BLF, I can't remember if we met last time, but the last meeting was really our pre-town meeting meeting. And then next week, we have our post-town meeting meeting.
Acton Finance Committee. So the Acton Finance Committee has not met since our last meeting. Or if they have, update is that Steve Noon is the chair this year, and Jason Cole is the vice chair. Their next meeting is this Tuesday. Yeah, please, oh, no, I was just gonna skip right by that. Please, Mary.
Health Insurance Trust, it was just basically a basic meeting, but the funds are still looking very favorable, the revenues, relative to the spending. So, which is good because when we voted no increase, we were hoping that would maintain, and it has.
Oh, Acton Board of Selectmen, Eileen?
Apparently, we can see Katie probably will be another year of the liaison of school committee from Board of Selectmen, right? But unfortunately, she left. And recently, we have all, I did not get a chance to go to Board of Selectmen because we have all those schedules conflict with it. So I'm sorry about it.
Okay. Foxborough Finance Committee, no update. Foxborough Board of Selectmen. Minuteman Tech High School.
I will just quickly share that they, for the second year, won a $495,000 grant to put toward their new manufacturing program. And then they're doing a lot with girls and STEM. They got a grant for $14,500 for a vacation camp and some other stuff. And they, there was a logo contest, and a junior designed a logo for something called Massachusetts Girls in the Trades. But it was a boy who designed it and won, who's a junior, so.
Okay, Acton, the CIP update.
That group has also not met.
Okay. I'm sorry. Sorry. There's been some concern that there's such a wide gap between meetings that maybe we should consider adding an April meeting. And I guess I kind of wanted to get a sense of how the committee feels about that. And it would be April 12.
So I'm fine with that. I mean, I guess it's because of Acton Town Meeting at the beginning of April, and then we don't need it again until the end of April. So that does leave a lot for the end of April. So why don't we add it to the agenda if we don't need it? We can always take it off the agenda, but at least it'll be calendared if we do. I think it's gonna be a busy year.
Any other thoughts? So am I getting a sense that, yes, you think that's a good idea? Anyone not think it's a good idea? Okay, I think let's put it on there. Okay, the next one is, I think we're gonna hold off on voting on the summer. Some, a lot of people are still kind of working out their vacation plans, so I think let's hold off on the summer workshop dates and look at those for the next meeting on June 8, I think it is. Okay. Superintendent's report.
A couple of brief items. With your permission, I'm actually going to, in the interest of the time, skip over my goals report in your School Committee for this evening. And I will present, I do have a slide pack to present at the June 8th meeting. In this packet, there is an extensive documentation of the end-of-the-year goals report that I provided for the committee and for the community. But again, in the interest of time, I think I'll hold on that item and come back to it at the June 8th meeting. Interschool Council, we did have the latest Interschool Council meeting last week. It was really a lot of interest around start time, the forthcoming conversation around assistant funding. Were really a couple of more topics of great interest. On the note of the Start Time Committee, nineteen point three. That survey has now closed, as members of the community are aware. There was a survey that was out there. We had approximately 2,500 responses from a whole host of staff and members of the community. And so the Start Time Committee Group does have that report, and we will be meeting next week to take a look at that in greater detail. And then on June the 8th, we'll provide you with the findings and recommendations there. Nineteen point four, I'm gonna turn this over to Dawn to speak to.
Thanks. So a few weeks ago, April 26th, I believe, we received a complaint from the Office of Civil Rights around website accessibility. We are one of hundreds of districts and other public entities across the country that have received the very same complaint, and it speaks to website accessibility. And Amy Bisiewicz and I have been working very collaboratively over the last few weeks to really kind of understand what does that mean, what isn't happening with our website that makes it not accessible for all users. And we actually have another conference call scheduled tomorrow, so just trying to work through the process of what that looks like, what is the scope. And our very first step is to submit a voluntary resolution to OCR next week that sort of outlines our plan. I'll be coming to the School Committee Policy Subcommittee the next time we meet, and having conversation with you around policy and procedure about website accessibility. I'm working with our investigator at OCR around what that might look like now, and hopefully that'll take shape here in the next few days. And then we'll be working over the course of the next 12 to 18 months to develop a compliant website and complete an audit based on the requirements that are, they're international standards for accessibility. As a challenge to you all, I will say that if you turn on Chromevox, V-O-X, which is an extension, it is a screen reader, and it will speak to you as you're navigating websites. But I would also challenge you to go to our website and try and navigate it just using your keyboard, not using a mouse. And you'll find very quickly that you will be able to get very far with it. So that's one of the, one of the key features. It's kind of an easy way to tell about accessibility. So there are a number of things wrong with our site, including pictures, simple things like pictures that don't have tags. So if I'm a user with a visual impairment and I come across a picture, and it's got img.3865, I mean, you know how we name our pictures, or our cameras name our pictures, so it doesn't have the accessibility features to say, girl reading a library book, or whatever the picture happens to have. So I'm not able to understand what that media actually is. And there are a number of tables that we've used, and widgets and things within Google that we've, that we use to set up our pages that you just cannot even get to, including our menus and some things in there. So we have, we're learning a lot, and we're really coming to understand how that might be better. Our challenge, of course, is that we have, we are, we've been really working hard in the last few years with some of the work that Deb and Amy have spearheaded around having all of our educators use websites to communicate with families and to engage families in a variety of ways. So certainly, it creates some challenges for us around training and making sure everybody has the tools that they need to be able to build accessible sites moving forward. And so we'll be kind of tackling that in the next, in the next six months or so, so. Very daunting work ahead, but Amy and I are, we're gonna do it. It's gonna happen. So what questions might you have?
So is there a cost involved with doing all these things we need to do? And, and we need to do them in the next fiscal year that we've already kind of come up with a budget for?
Correct.
Do we have an idea of what that cost is?
Um, varying. We're hoping to kind of wrap our brains around that in the next few weeks. One of the ideas that we tossed around was that we did earmark money in the budget to move to scan special education paperwork and to move to a special education system. There was tech money set aside to do that work. Given that this is a civil rights complaint and a violation, it sort of rises to the top. So depending on budgetary restrictions and such, that might be something that we, you know, want to take a look at in terms of prioritization. So, to come, more, more information to come around that, for sure. Some of the, as we've talked to some of the auditing firms, the audit alone looks like it'll be 20 to 35,000, just for the audit piece, and that doesn't involve website migration or development. So we're still kind of pricing all that out and deciding what can we do in-house, what, we don't have a lot of capacity, quite honestly. Our tech folks are doing all they can to support our infrastructure and our network, just day-to-day sorts of things, the systems that we have, so.
We don't have the luxury of planning this for a budget item for 2019?
Right.
Okay.
Yes. Dawn, I appreciate looking for a place in the budget, but I'm remembering you talking, I think it was, it was at Budget Saturday, about, I just remember it feeling very inefficient and very wasteful, the way we have paper files and the whole plan to digitize them was really exciting, and I think going to save a lot of time. And so I wonder if there might be other places that we can look creatively for that money.
Yep.
How quickly can JD get that net metering thing going?
Yeah, I'm asking that.
I'm going to skip over nineteen point five. There's nothing pressing to update you on. I'll speak to that at the next meeting. And just a couple of other FYI, items, sorry, within the FYI section, just to bring to the community's attention, specifically number one, twenty-one point six, Challenge Success newsletters. Again, some terrific newsletters, both from the district as well as from the Challenge Success partnership as well, too. The second one has to do with the field closure, Leary Field. As the, hopefully the community is well aware, we are moving forward with that as one of the capital items this summer. And as a result of the replacement of the turf, that field will be out of, out of commission. The dates that are outlined in that memo there are between June the 19th until August the 11th, with the hope that that work, of course, can be completed within the window of time, and we have every reason right now to believe that it can be. But June 19th to August the 11th, and Community Education taking care of the bookings has already adjusted, has already adjusted those bookings. And then finally, the last family learning series of this school year will be held on May the 31st from 7:00 until 8:30. The presenter is Dr. Anthony Rao. The topic is Getting to Manhood: Raising Boys to Succeed. And that's for, target audience is for grades pre-K to 12, and it will be held in the high school auditorium. And that's it for me.
Okay, I just have one last note, is just a reminder that Wednesday, May 24th, at 7:30 PM in the Junior High Library, we are adding a meeting. And this agenda will be posted on Monday afternoon to discuss next steps. And that's all we have for tonight, so can I have a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Thank you.